Good evening, everyone. If I could ask everyone to take their seats, we're going to get started. Good evening and one, everyone. Welcome to council chambers here at City Hall for the reconvening of the public hearing May the 23rd and 25th. It's now May the 26th. This is evening number three for this public hearing, which I will call to order and ask Madam Clerk for the roll call, please.
Mayor Robertson's in the chair. Counselor Louis. Counselor Stevenson is absent. Counselor Deal also absent. Oh, Counselor Deal, excuse me, present. Counselor Yang.
Here.
Counselor Reimer.
Here.
Counselor Megs.
Here.
Counselor Ball is absent. Counselor Carr.
Here.
Counselor Affleck and Counselor DeGenova. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And we first acknowledge we're on the unceded homelands of Musqueam, Squamish, and Slaywith with the First Nations, thankful for that good fortune. And tonight, we are again, we're reconvening on the public hearing with rezoning for 105 Kiefer Street, 544 Columbia Street. And we, in terms of process, will have quick responses to any questions that were posed by council via email since last night, on the 25th. And then we'll dive right into the speakers list at speaker number 93, as Kay Higgins will be the first speaker. And I'll just make a couple of quick announcements for speakers who are here on speaking with council. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report that is being considered. Would just say, we've had a number of speakers, I think, shifting around and making some of their comments relative to what other speakers have done here. I want to just reinforce how important it is to stick to the rezoning proposal that's in front of us, the recommendations that are before council. We really need to stick to that specific topic, rather than various thoughts and ideas and hearsay about various motives and activities around who's here to speak. So I just want to be sure we're very much sticking to our task here of considering what is before council. We ask that speakers do state whether they support or are opposed to the recommendations. And speakers may speak once. If you have more comments, you can submit them in writing to our clerks, or you can email them to publichearing@vancouver.ca. And those speaking on behalf of three or more persons or organizations have an additional three minutes to speak, eight minutes to speak. And we ask that the persons or representatives of the organizations must also be present and not be speaking themselves. There is more seating available in here, so we're not as jammed in terms of rotating people through council chambers. But we want to be sure people have the opportunity to be in here just before they speak. So check in with our security here and make sure you're in line at the right time and able to get into council chambers. There is lots of room up here right now. So finally, if council does not conclude hearing from speakers tonight, and we will go till 10 o'clock tonight, I think that's what we had put out there, 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. tonight. If we don't conclude hearing from speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on Monday, May 29, 2017. That's at 9:30 a.m. We will start up again hearing from speakers. So with that, we will, I'll ask Madam Clerk on item number one, to read the record of additional summary of correspondence received since 3:30 p.m. on Thursday, May 25.
One piece of correspondence in support of the application was received by council, 35 pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application, 525 signatures on a petition in opposition to the application. This represents all correspondence received from approximately 9:00 p.m. Thursday, May 25th to approximately 3:00 p.m. today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so we'll go now to staff for any responses to email questions. Did we have questions from council to be answered before we call speakers?
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Celine Mobles from Housing Community Services. I'm going to answer a few questions just related to some of the housing-related questions, and then Yang will follow with the other questions. We were asked how much money a low-income senior receives from OAS and GIS supplement. So for an individual, a single senior who turns 65 and has no pension or other income, that individual will receive $1,442 a month in OAS and GIS. This amount would go down for that individual if they had a partner who received some benefit or another pension, but their combined income would go up. In response to the submission from the Chair of the Seniors Advisory Committee, we were also asked if this project was formally presented to that committee, and if so, was the presentation made by the applicant, B.C. Housing, and/or staff. Neither staff, B.C. Housing, nor the applicant team have presented the project to the seniors' advisory committee. However, based on notes from the committee's June 17, 2017 working session, Chanel Lee of Youth for Chinese Seniors presented her organization's thoughts on the proposed project. We were also asked to clarify the definition of social housing and the level of affordability that would be achieved in the level of affordability, pardon me, that would be achieved in the 25 social housing units at 105 Kiefer. So the citywide definition of social housing requires that the units must be owned by a nonprofit or by or on behalf government. Thirty percent of the units, or in this case, as noted in the report, eight of those units must be rented at rates affordable to households with incomes below the housing income limits or hills, which is set by B.C. Housing. And finally, social housing units must be secured as rental for 60 years or life of the building through legal agreements. The citywide definition of social housing also applies to Chinatown and the 105 Kiefer project as outlined in the report. Under our current bylaws, there is no added affordability requirement in Chinatown as there are in other parts of the downtown east side. However, as indicated by Armin from B.C. Housing on Tuesday, the intent is to deepen the level of affordability in all of the 25 social housing units to ensure that they meet the needs of vulnerable Chinatown seniors. Finally, we were asked if B.C. Housing's publicly announced $7.3 million allocation for the 25 units was a good deal. While B.C. Housing publicly announced that funding commitment to the project, they have confirmed that this is an up-to allocation and not the amount they intend to pay for the units. The project costing is preliminary at this rezoning stage. B.C. Housing intends to negotiate a fair price based on the cost of construction.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Yan Zhang, Planner with Planning Downtown Division. I'll just finish the response to the rest of the questions. We were asked, is the proposed floor area comparable to what is achievable under HA1A zoning, because FSR is not limited in HA1A zoning? The proposed FSR is comparable to recent approval under the HA1A zoning for a number of reasons. A, other developments achieve approximately 7.0 FSR or higher or lower, around there, while limited to 90 feet, by generally being bulkier enassing with less upper floor and rear setbacks. And two, the particular contacts for these sites were less sensitive. And C, during the development permit process, staff did not receive a significant amount of concerns about the proposed density from the public or advisory groups. The next question is, if the FSR of this application were achieved in a nine-story building, would that mean a really bulky building? And wouldn't it be logical to assume the urban design panel would reject that bulk and require paring down the massing as it has in the recent application of this 12-story building? So it is a matter of conjecture to speculate how the UDP or CHAPAC or the public would respond, because we don't have a development permit application on this site. However, given staff's recent understanding of the sensitivity of the site, early advice to an applicant would be to lessen the building massing at the most sensitive portion of the site. We were asked, what does no increase in land value generated from the market component mean on page 19 of the report? Does it mean the market condos or the commercial space on the ground floor? The reference to market component refers to all the market residential strata and commercial density in the project. We were asked about the three actual floors of condos, whether it generates a land lift or land value. The Development Performa review indicated no increase in value, i.e. land lift, relative to land value under existing zoning. Whilst there is a relative small increase in the market residential strata, any value increase is offset by reduced commercial floor areas and increased common amenity areas in the building, as well as the costs associated with rezoning. The next question is, do we get land independently appraised before we assess whether there would be an increase in the land value generated by the rezoning? And what factors are considered in assessing whether and how much of an increase in land value is generated by the rezoning? Cities' practice is to undertake a staff review of development performa provided by the applicant. This does not normally include an independent appraisal. With regards to the second part of the questions, staff from Real Estate Services will be best equipped to provide a response. They're not here tonight, but will be available to answer council questions at some point during this hearing process. Next question is that the report says that there is a possibility to extend a 10-year lease for the seniors' cultural activity space. Do we know if an extension must be mutually agreed to and basically the same below-market rental rate? So first of all, the developer is offering the seniors' reduced rent for 10 years, that's term. The 10-year lease would be between the owner and a registered NPO or seniors' group on terms and conditions acceptable to the city. Any extension beyond 10 years would be at the discretion of the owner and would be negotiated on terms and conditions agreeable to both the owner and the NPO seniors' group. The rental rate would be agreed as part of those negotiations. However, the owner would be under no obligation to offer below-market rental rates. The last question is, will the height of the proposed building interfere with the sightline to the moon from Dr. Sanyasen's gardens during New Moon and other key festivals? So staff are currently looking into these questions and getting educated on the possibility of a moon study. However, at this point, we can, please refer to figure four in the appendix D of the report for general illustration of the amount of viewable building mass from this proposal would have from the Dr. Sanyasen Gardens. And we have a couple more questions received this afternoon that we didn't have time to prepare a response for, and we will be happy to do that Monday a.m. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much for those responses. So we're ready to go to our speakers list and start hearing from members of the public again. So we are on speaker number 93, and that is Kay Higgins, Executive Director of Unit Pit Society for Art and Critical Awareness, followed by Vincent Kwan. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for the welcome. Good afternoon, your worship, Mayor Robertson, members of council. I'd like to thank you also for having made the territorial acknowledgement to open this meeting. It's very important to me. I also, I urge everybody who makes or hears a territorial acknowledgement to go beyond it and to look at ways to deconize what you do in your everyday life. It's very, very important to me. I am here to oppose the rezoning of 105 Kiefer Street. I'll give you a little bit of history of my involvement with the neighborhood. Since 2010, the Unit Pit Society has been located first at 222 Georgia, then at 15 East Pender in the Chinese Times Building, and currently on a 15-year lease at 236 East Pender, a building that was once one of the major groceries on that block, that is set up as a wholesaler with warehouse space and so on. That enables us to play, to provide affordable space for artists, as well as for our programming, and to engage with the community, which is something that we're just in our infancy with. What we find is that the Chinatown community is immensely accepting and curious. It's an ideal place for artist-run culture, in fact. We can't say the same thing of the new residents that are coming to Chinatown, who seem to be mostly young professionals or young people in the TAMI fields, technology, advertising, marketing, information. What they do when they come to the neighborhood is they develop their own businesses. That is, in a sense, they are overlaid on the community that's already there. I don't know what the secret is to actually integrating the two communities, but it is one put down on top of the other. Unfortunately, one has got a lot more resources and can outcompete the original Chinatown community as consumers. Another knock-on effect of development is the overall rise in assessments. Now, as a business, as an organization paying triple net, we are vulnerable to increases in the assessment because it increases the tax rate. We can go and negotiate a lower basic rent with our landlord, but we do not control this lift, which the assessment of the building has increased from 1.1 million in 2014 to 2.35 million this year. And it's not something we can actually anticipate, except that we know it seems to be tied to further development of the neighborhood. What you have here in this proposal is further development, further increases, and we believe further increases in the valuation of land, which has knock-on effects in terms of traditional businesses not finding it affordable, being able to close out. The effects on housing are being felt, even though a lot of it is Klan housing, Klan Association housing, and so on. The primary potential, I think, that we're losing is, I think I heard a comment, we need almost $400 million to make up the gap in social housing that really should be built here, and that's expected to be negotiated from other levels of government. But those levels of government have to come on board. Well, it's going to become even more expensive if we do not do something to depress the rise in property values in Chinatown and to preserve the remaining brownfield sites on which social housing can be built. For that reason, I concur with the advocates that we've been hearing from the opposed side here, that what we want to see on the site is 100% social housing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You have questions for Counsel Carr?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks so much for coming. I really appreciate you sticking to the, like, third day. It's great. My question is around the issue you've raised, which is new development coming in, new kinds of activities, increasing land value, and consequently through triple net. You said you could negotiate a lower rent, but I'd like to know if you have ever been successful at doing that, and if your, or if your rent has gone up as the property values have.
Okay. So basically, we have a pre-negotiated 15-year lease. The building itself is unusual in that it doesn't fit most of the incoming new retail uses. That is, it was set up as a large grocery with warehouse capacity, and it would be a bit of a white elephant. So we can negotiate the basic rent that we pay, but the triple net part of it, the property tax part of it, that's on us. That's totally on us. We could maybe, as one small leaseholder, try to negotiate with the city for a reduction in taxes. I don't really see that happening because of the general tendency toward trying to have fairness across the board in taxes, not go case by case, oh, you get a break, you get a break, you don't get a break.
Okay. You don't have to answer this question, but if you could, it'd be helpful. Has, how much has the triple net part of your rent payments increased?
Oh, it's doubled.
Doubled?
Yep.
In the last?
In the last four years.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. We appreciate that.
And Counsel Deal, questions?
Yes, thanks very much. Thanks for coming out. Just a quick question. You referred to, I just want to be very clear, you not seeing the new people who are coming in, coming and buying art at the gallery and consuming and purchasing and supporting and collecting.
They seem fundamentally incurious, but that's just, perhaps I have, perhaps I have a little prejudice of my own. We're an unassuming space. We don't look like a high-end gallery. We have new condo development across the street, which has just had move-ins. And our one interaction with people who've newly moved in was actually hostile. It was a visit from new residents who came in hot going, what is this place and what are you doing here? I said we were in between exhibitions, but if they wanted to come back in another couple of weeks, they might see something that would really annoy them, and I encourage them to do so.
I love it. Okay, because I'm looking at some of the art on your website, and it looks like the kind of thing that would get snapped up, but apparently not. Okay. Thanks for that.
Okay. Thanks. That's your questions. Thank you for being here tonight. Our next speaker is 95, Vincent Kwan. Dr. Sanyasen, Classical Chinese Garden. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Not wanting to duplicate a lot of the comments that we already mentioned throughout the last couple of days, I will try to be somewhat brief with my comment. I'm Vincent Kwan. I'm the Executive Director of Dr. Sanyasen Classical Chinese Garden. I'm here to express our oppositions to the rezoning applications on 105 Kiefer Street. We believe the development is inconsistent with the overall character of Chinatown, which, as we all know, is a designated national historic district. In addition, we also believe that the proposed height and mass are inappropriate for a site located right in the heart of the culturally significant and sensitive area of Chinatown that houses the Dr. Sanyasen Park and the garden, as well as the Chinese Cultural Centre and the Memorial Square. 105 Kiefer is a unique site, which we will, which will also help to form a new gateway into Chinatown with the redevelopment of the Northeast Falls Creek. As such, this site and any development proposal demands a higher level of care and attention so that it complements and honors our community. Its cultural heritage and history, all of which contributes to what makes Vancouver's Chinatown unique and special. In addition, a defined and cultural characteristics of Chinatown is the small-scale retail form which is unique to Vancouver and should be respected and enhanced through careful development policy, which is not the case with the current proposed development. Now, we do believe that growth is a good thing. We are not in opposition to development per se, but it needs to be done right for Chinatown. We are therefore suggesting a rethink, a pause of this rezoning application within the context of a larger, longer-term goal for Chinatown. We need to ensure that such goals include a commitment to a long-term, sustainable Chinatown that achieve a respectful balance between conservation of cultural heritage, economic growth, and the social needs of the local community. Furthermore, Chinatown has seen the impact of large development on Main Street, and we understand the city is wisely reconsidering its zoning policy for the area. Now is the opportunity for us to take a step back and rethink this proposed development in the context of these revisions. And finally, it has been said that the soul of a city often lies in its antiquity. I am sure that we can all agree that conserving our cultural heritage, both tangible and intangible, is a good thing to do, and it's not simply about nostalgia. It is about its power to educate, educate on history, educate on cultural appreciation. Conservation- Conservation of cultural heritage as cultural heritage assets should also be seen as a good practice for protecting our investment that we all call Vancouver Chinatown. We do not believe that the current development proposal will serve to advance the cultural heritage of Vancouver's Chinatown. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And you have questions from Councillor Carr?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, and it, thank you so much for coming on a Friday night. And it arose during previous questions and speakers. And the speaker said, "Have we thought about the impact of this taller building on the sightlines from Dr. Sun Yat-sen Gardens to the moon?" Because of the importance of the Moon Festivals, for example. Have you, has thought, thought occurred to you, or has that been a discussion amongst the people? For example, the volunteers or staff at the Sun Yat-sen Garden?
It has, that particular question has always been part of the overall discussions that we have within the garden, as well as among the overall communities. I've heard of these questions raised a number of times. It's definitely a concern. It's a concern for very important cultural events that we host, but I think we should look at this as something more than that. It is, every time we look at, if we tie that to festivals, particularly cultural festivals, it is something that, we should tie that to cultural heritage instead of just an event. So it is a very commonly asked question, and we do have concerns.
Yeah, I never, I hadn't ever thought of that, so thank you. Appreciate that very much.
Okay, that's your questions. Thank you very much for being here tonight. And our next speaker, 96 Ivy Su. It's Ivy Su here. No, Ivy Su. 97 Man Fung. Is Man Fung here? Not here. 98 is Fred Ma. He followed by Komen Chow. Welcome, Mr. Ma.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, councillors, my name is Fred Ma. I'm the President of Chinatown Society Heritage Buildings Association. First, I would like to thank council for initiating the Chinatown Society Legacy Program to assist us in stabilizing our century-old buildings. I'm opposed to rezoning of this project. I've been a volunteer in Chinatown for more than 50 years. I started my volunteering in 1962, teaching English to new immigrants, to new immigrant government workers. Throughout the years, I have opposed the city on issues, on projects such as the freeway and the fire hall. I also worked with the city on many projects, including raising over $200,000 for the installation of the Hand Dynasty Bill, a gift from a city, Guangzhou, to the city of Vancouver. I also chaired the committee that installed a Chinese-Canadian memorial statue at the Memorial Square. Together, the Chinatown Society Heritage Buildings Association owns 12 heritage buildings. Both of them are in the Unit Block and 100 Block East Pender. This is part of the reason why Pender Street, between Millennium Gate and Gore, has been designated as a national historic site. The proposed development at 105 Kiefer is right next to the Memorial Square, across from the Chinese Cultural Centre and the Sun Yat-sen Garden. The square with its statue of a railway worker and a World War II Chinese-Canadian veteran is part of our history. The proposed building, without any Chinatown character, is simply too tall and too massive for this site. This area is the heart and soul of Chinatown. Chinatown is not for sale. I saw some Chinese Canadians who were bust in Tuesday wearing red t-shirts with words saying, "Support project at 105 Kiefer. Seniors need housing." It is true that we need more housing for seniors, but at what cost? A few years ago, a UBC study concluded that by 2020, we will need 3,300 units for Chinese-Canadian seniors. 25 units of seniors' housing in the proposed development is only 0.75% of the total. And not all these units are for Chinese Canadians. In fact, there is no guarantee. Any one of these units will be for Chinese Canadians. I hope the people wearing the t-shirts, red t-shirts, understand this. There are 110 units of market value housing in this project. In a number of city documents, such as the Chinatown Vision, they refer to the census, socioeconomic, and cultural nature of this area. An understanding of the possible socioeconomic and cultural impact in this market housing is critical towards making an informed decision on this rezoning. Last Friday, your staff distributed the information on Chinatown development policy changes, progress update from the staff to community, and mentioned what they have heard from the community. Your staff are preparing recommendations to you. These include, and I read, "These recommendations could help temper land speculation and adjust pace of development. These recommended changes envision development to proceed gradually with a mix of newer and older buildings and respects Chinatown character. Tall and wide buildings will no longer be considered. Cancel rezoning policy of Chinatown South. Overheight buildings will no longer be considered. Instead, allow buildings to proceed under the base zoning height of up to 75 feet on Pender Street and up to 90 feet on Chinatown South." These recommendations will be coming before you in June. And I understand this proposal before you is prior to your staff's recommendations. Based on what your staff have heard from the community, you must reject this proposal as it is.
So you're over your five minutes. If you could wrap up in a sentence of questions?
Like, what I like to conclude is that you, as leaders of the city, must make a vote and say no to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councillor Carr is questions first.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks so much, Mr. Ma, for your 40 years, is it, of community service?
No, it's more than 50 years.
More than 50 years of volunteerism for our city. Thank you. My question is this. You've said the height and density is too much and that it's insufficient number of units of social housing for seniors. So given that, what would you like? If you had your heart's desire, what would be on the site in that building or on that site next to the memorial?
What I would like to see on the site is total seniors' housing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor De Genova?
I was going to ask you the same question as Councillor Carr, but I have one more question. I'm not sure, I know it's been a few long nights here for the hearing, and thank you for waiting, your turn to speak. What we had heard from B.C. Housing, I had asked a question in the very beginning, before we heard from speakers regarding cultural sensitivities in the area and if these 25 units that B.C. Housing was planning to purchase would in fact, the RFP would go out to a nonprofit for Chinese seniors. And it was my understanding from B.C. Housing, and maybe our staff can clarify that after, that that was indeed their intention. So you had said that no Chinese Canadians would be guaranteed?
Well, how can anybody restrict seniors' housing to a certain nationality or whatever you want to call it, a certain race? I don't think, you know, us a Canadian, you know? I don't think we can restrict it.
Okay, what I heard you say is that you wanted it to be for Chinese seniors?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, that's what I was asking you. Sorry, I was just getting into that.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, so you think that it should be for all seniors regardless of?
That's right.
Their heritage. Okay, that's very good to know. Thank you very much.
Okay, those are your questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Ma. Appreciate you being here and all of your tireless work for the community. Thank you. So we are on speaker number 99, Komen Chow. Is Komen Chow here? Not here. Speaker 100, Rose Chow. Rose Chow, not here. 101 is Stephen Wong. Stephen Wong here? Not here. 102, Anita Romaniuk, Coalition of Progressive Electors and former Park Board Commissioner. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I am a settler of European ancestry. I am the Coalition of Progressive Electors corresponding secretary and am also a member of their housing committee. I am speaking in opposition to this development. The issue of revitalizing Chinatown has been with us for many years. Chinatown has already been saved at least once from the destruction of, by the proposed destruction by freeway in the 1960s and 70s, and has more recently been recognized for its heritage value. Unfortunately, the proposed development does not contribute to revitalizing Chinatown. Indeed, it contributes to its demise. First, in height and design. The reason we're having this rezoning is because it does exceed the height that was proposed for this, and I would say that maybe even that was a bit much. And even with the setback of the top three stories, it is still out of sync with the Chinese Cultural Centre, Sun Yat-sen Gardens, and it dwarfs the memorial to the Chinese railway workers and veterans. Despite the claim to recognize heritage aspects of Chinatown in the architect's drawing, it does not appear to do so, and I think you know you must have a problem when so many people keep referring to it as Yountown North or other associations with Yountown. Chinatown is not Yountown. The second problem is that there are insufficient amenities. There are only 25 units of proposed senior housing, and of that, only eight or nine are going to be at the lower rate. In addition, the developer for providing this rather meager level of social housing is exempted from DCL requirements and gets to be paid by B.C. Housing for the use of the second floor. The cultural space for seniors on the ground floor is 1,107 square feet. This is roughly 33 feet by 33 feet, or roughly 10 meters by 10 meters. Imagine, you take a meter stick and you flip it over 10 times in that direction, and then you flip it over 10 times in that direction. That's your space. It's not very big. While it will provide some space, it is certainly not going to meet the need for cultural space in this community for the future. Now, these might satisfy the city's criteria as they stand now, but I think it's really quite pathetic considering the needs of this community and especially for low-income housing. It just isn't sufficient. The third problem is gentrification and loss of community. The increase of strata condos in Chinatown, not just this, but some which have already been built and probably others that are being proposed, tends to raise the overall level of the price of housing in Chinatown. I think it would have been better back when you did the rezoning initially if you had provided more space for rental-only. We don't need more expensive condos here. We need more rental units, period. Plus, the stores that people who traditionally depend on are being displaced by stores catering to higher-income people who have traditionally depended on them. Now, I recognize that the developer is providing smaller store space on the ground floor, but even there, as you get more people moving in with higher income, they're going to start demanding designer foods, which aren't what the lower-income people here can afford and probably don't even particularly want. Much has been made of the divide between the seniors who spoke in favor and the people who are advocating against it, particularly when they speak about social housing. They're actually not far apart. Both sides want more social housing. The difference is, do you settle for what is really not enough? Or do you be bold and push for something better? And finally, this is not a development that adds to either the culture or the community of Chinatown, and I ask you to please reject it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here to speak tonight. No questions for you? Thank you. 103 Leslie Lee is our next speaker. Is Leslie Lee here? Leslie Lee, Leslie Madison, Speaker 104, Leslie Madison. Not here. 105 Marilyn Hogan is here, and followed by 106 Fay Leung. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Marilyn Hogan. I'm the Chair of the Pope Housing Committee and Vice Chair of Residence for Community Control on City Development. I'm also a Vancouver resident. I'm speaking against the 105 Kiefer development rezoning application for a number of reasons. The developer says that the rezoning would guarantee 25 units of senior housing, which is not all that many. If the company were really interested in helping seniors or other low-income people, it could offer seniors' units without the rezoning or additional building height. This application also offers market condos, expensive ones. Costly market condos tend to drive up the cost of rentals in an area. This application, if approved, would likely impact the rest of Chinatown and the downtown east side in terms of rental rates. The applicant talks about a vibrant future for the neighborhood, but this really means, in effect, that the building would drive out the people and businesses who can't afford expensive places. Revitalization should be done by supporting the current residents, not by making their neighborhood unaffordable. This is gentrification, and that is not my idea of revitalization. A market development on this lot means the loss potential of a site to truly serve the community. This application in this location does not comply with the 2012 Chinatown Neighborhood Plan. Page 24 of the plan states that, quote, "Maintaining the scale of development is important in retaining Chinatown's character," unquote. The rezoning policy for Chinatown South, clause 6A, says that buildings should, quote, "Respect historic Chinatown HA1" in terms of adjacent architectural scale, orientation, massing expression, details, and materials, unquote. In this present application, the building height and scale and location would actually overwhelm the immediate neighbors, such as the Dr. Sun Yat-sen Gardens and the Memorial Plaza and the Chinese Cultural Centre. This point has been reiterated to you several times in this public hearing. This building would be suitable in many other parts of the city, but not here. You've heard strenuous objection from not only numerous people at this public hearing, but also thousands of people who have signed petitions demanding that the city say no to the project. They want a smaller-scale building that's truly affordable for low-income people, including mixed-use public space for young and old to come together as a community. But I'm not speaking for the Chinatown community. They have done that themselves. They have done that themselves. It was recently said that city councillors should make decisions that reflect the views of their constituents. This is your perfect opportunity to do just that. Chinatown, historic Chinatown, is an integral part of Vancouver, something that makes our city so unique. Vancouver needs to save our Chinatown heritage. We need to do this together as a city. To that end, I urge the city to be creative with this. One option is to work with the federal and provincial governments to buy the land and undertake a land swap with the applicant and thus provide the truly affordable housing and mixed-use building the people are asking for. That is the revitalization the Chinatown neighborhood needs. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. No questions. Thanks for coming. And Speaker number 106, Fei Liang. Fei Liang definitely sent a letter. I don't see her. 107 is Lily Lee. Lily Lee is here, followed by Joseph Munier.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm sorry, my throat's very hoarse. I have a cold right now, but I want to be here to make sure that my statement gets read. Is that okay? Can you hear me?
Good. You're good.
Stay here. Okay. Okay, I just want to make my statement and then I'll see if there's any questions. The current proposal is essentially the same as the three previous iteration, and there has been little or no attempt by the applicant to address the concerns raised by the various advisory committees, professionals, academias, local stakeholders, and other members of the community. These include the overwhelming bulk and height of the development, its interface with the public realm, and lack of sensitivity to the adjacent land uses with virtually no benefits to the local community. There is no innovation in the proposal at that which, that would meet, sorry, that would merit an increase in the permissible height increase from 90 feet to 120 feet. And the proposed height is considered grossly incompatible with the adjoining National Historic District and identified heritage buildings. Excuse me. Okay, sorry. Densification and increasing the supply of housing in the city, particularly market housing, should not come at the expense of destroying a widely-recognized, highly-valued and well-loved neighborhood and historic area. For the reasons stated above, I strongly object to this rezoning applications, which should not be supported by the staff and council or to be brought forward to a public hearing. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming to speak. No questions. And our next speaker is 108, Joseph Munier. Joseph Munier, not here. 109, Christopher Lanonan is coming, followed by 110, Bill Yuan, and then David Wong. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Robertson, Vancouver City Council, thanks for allowing me a moment to speak. I want to start by acknowledging that we're on the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Slaywithhuth peoples, and it's from that foundation that I express my opposition to this project. My name's Christopher Lanonan. Though I'm not part of any organization, I stand strongly with Chinatown Concern Group, Chinatown Action Group, and Youth Collaborative for Chinatown, and I'm fully behind the alternatives that they've put forth. I've lived in Vancouver for about 15 years. I grew up in Toronto until I came here to attend post-secondary school. Though I don't live in Chinatown, I did work in an office in the downtown east side for nine years until very recently, and I still spend time there on a regular basis. Beyond my affinity for the neighborhood, the restaurants, bakeries, its atmosphere, I care most that the people who have and do live there are able to remain. Tonight's public hearing is the first time I've ever spoken in city council. It's the first time I've read a zoning report summary. I work in animation, so I admit that I'm not formally trained in city planning nor architecture, but this project is terribly important, and ultimately, the report was not a difficult read. What struck me most was the acknowledgement from staff that, quote, "Achieving a balance between diverse and changing community aspirations and the need for consistency in development review is an exceedingly challenging undertaking in an environment where the community is under pressure from outside market forces," end quote. Certainly, people's analyses will differ somewhat, but it seems obvious to me that this project does not achieve that balance when viewed within the context of Chinatown as a whole. Were efforts made with each new development that's occurred to include the provision and protection of housing for Chinese seniors and other long-term residents at rents that fall within pension and welfare rates, it might be possible to consider this proposal fair, but we know that hasn't been the case. The new buildings on Main are luxurious monsters. Even if all 131 units in the current application were explicitly devoted to housing low-income seniors, it would not counter the loss of appropriate housing and retail elsewhere in Chinatown and the broader downtown east side. But it would be a start. The question of what is politically possible is a constant concern, but the question that never seems to be asked is, what is right? Why must we hew so closely to the upper limits outlined in the Historic Heights Review when even your own report acknowledged concerns that the gentrification they've encouraged has had deleterious effects on the communities that have long inhabited Chinatown? We know from experience across the downtown east side that this project will displace people. We know that rents will go up. We know that people on pension will no longer be able to afford to live in the place they've called home for decades. I ask whether anyone here speaking in favor of the development would be prepared to tell a Chinatown resident to their face that they need to leave their home? And if they're unwilling to do that, then please reconsider why they would be willing to do so through bureaucracy. Where will those people go, and where do you draw the line? Even though speaking in favor of the proposal, as we heard on Tuesday, have acknowledged when asked that the target of $700 a month for a handful of units is unaffordable for those on seniors' pension, and the non-permanent semi-private community space being offered is a minimal resource at best. I can't imagine anyone here is opposed to the provision of those spaces. I'm certainly not, but many of us recognize that they're little more than crumbs for us to fight over. Yet another luxury condo won't contribute anything worth remembering, though it might help to destroy what remains of Chinatown as we know it. A project in line with the demands of Chinatown Concern Group involving 100% social housing, ideally for seniors, mixed-community spaces, things like that, could last as long as any of the Klan buildings in the neighborhood and serve similarly beneficial purposes for contemporary needs. History most charitably remembers public services and public goods. We've heard speakers evoking the victories in the rejection of the freeway through Chinatown, just as we remember the loss in the destruction of Hogan's Alley for the viaduct, an undertaking many in the city have since admitted was a serious mistake. Mayor and council, what sort of legacy do you want to believe behind? There's a chance to do so much more than what's being offered here tonight. Will your successors find themselves apologizing for an historic wrong, or will they remember this decision as a turning point in the struggle to maintain a Chinatown worthy of that name? I very much hope for the latter, and so I hope you reject this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Carr, questions?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have just a quick question. I don't know if you heard one of the earlier speakers tonight, but somebody mentioned that a person, I guess that would be like you, somebody who is younger in the high-tech world, that there was a concern that those kind of people coming to Chinatown attracted by the condo opportunities would not want to use the older-type stores and that kind of thing, and so it would lead to the demise of the businesses. But I heard you say that that's what you like, that you're in that field, but that's what, that you like those restaurants and stores. So I wonder if you can sort of tell me from your point of view whether you think you're unusual or fairly similar to other people in your field and young people in high-tech? I mean, do they like Chinatown the way it is from your experience or no?
Well, I will say that I'm sort of beside the high-tech business. I'm more in entertainment. I make cartoons for kids. I use computers, but I don't really, like, I don't know from apps. I can't make a thing work. You know, it's, that's pretty much it. Although I will say that the presence of studios in the downtown east side is very much like sort of architecture firms and other, and like app developers, startups. I do consider myself to be an exception. Many of my coworkers didn't like working in the downtown east side when we were there, and I'm not really sure what to say beyond that, just that...
I'm just looking, I was just looking for an opinion.
Yeah. And also, I guess I don't have much interest in buying down there either.
You mean buying a condo?
Yeah. Like buying a condo or something. I'd prefer to not contribute to the elevation of property values more than has already happened, so I live in Mount Pleasant.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your honesty in responding to my question. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. That's your questions. Thanks very much. You have one more question here.
Oh, sorry. I was slow coming on. I thought I pressed all the buttons, but...
Oh, for sure.
I'm of an older generation and the buttons... Just kidding. Have you been here for much of the hearing so far?
I've been here since the beginning, yeah.
Okay. So I've heard it's private land, right? Developer's not going to sell, not interested in swapping, and he's put forward this proposal. If this proposal is turned down, he's saying they're going to build condos anyways up to the 90 feet. That seems to be the state of play currently. I know everybody's calling for 100% social housing and everything else, but it's sort of a forced choice in the sense, right? If there's no third option, which I don't believe there is so far, the developer will talk about that later, I suppose, but currently, it's like this proposal that's there, if you turn it down, we're just going to build luxury condos anyways, up to 90 feet within the zoning, when you don't have to come back to council for approval, which is preferable to you, or... You don't have to ask the question, but if you, that's sort of the conundrum we're in right now, right?
Well, I do consider that to be a kind of a false choice. Some speakers yesterday especially emphasized that there are things that the city can do as the governing body of this land to push beyond that. If the developer insists on going ahead, then maybe there is nothing that can be done under your administration, but I don't see any reason why with a new provincial government, literally just elected, and a relatively...
They only last maybe like three weeks.
Yeah, exactly. And a relatively new federal government, as Jenny Kwan mentioned on Tuesday, why the city couldn't push with those multiple levels of government towards orchestrating something, acquiring the land in some way? And I will admit that Ivan Drury's suggestion yesterday of bringing back expropriation is also something that really appeals to me. Probably not an option, but I wanted to throw...
Go take my place, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. That's your questions. Thank you. And we, it sounds like Speaker 108, Joseph Munier, was, you were just stepped out of the room for one second, and we missed your number there, so you're back, or we go to Bill Yuan. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Joseph Munier, and originally from Montreal. At 18 years old, to show up my link with the Chinese community, at 18 years old, I moved closer to my college, Jaiswood College. I took an apartment next to a Chinese school. I volunteer, and I volunteer for Chinese senior painting their ceiling and so on. So it started there at 18 years old. At 45, I moved in Vancouver. I wanted to be close to the ocean and wonderful Stanley Pike, close to Stanley Pike. Forty-five years ago, I had friends in Strathcona, so I was biking, walking all the way from the west end, downtown, Gastown, Crosstown, was not called Crosstown at that time, Chinatown and Strathcona. So I'm an eyewitness of the changes that happened in this city, of this part of the city. Twenty-five years ago, I moved in Chinatown by choice. All the speaker I heard today, not today, the last three days, except tonight, I just arrived, the issue here, I believe, is one building, one residential building being built on the edge of Chinatown and Crosstown, that to me seems to be with adjustment within general plan of the city regarding those neighborhoods. On Kiefer Street, there are many buildings the same size, the same, many with architectural design that acknowledge the heritage of the area. But all speakers I heard, most of them, all of them, were about a much broader issue, low housing for low-income people and seniors. That was the major issue I heard, and about heritage Chinatown, many emotional speakers. Let's go with the first issue, housing for low-income people. That application, to me, seems to be a target of many active groups with good intentions, but I don't find it fair to target an application like that specifically. The broad issue is housing for low-income people. It's happening all over the world, in Laisse City, Vancouver, San Francisco, London, and Shanghai. So it's happening all over issue. It's a big issue. Elected official citizen have to take some measure, businesses and everything to improve the situation. It's a world problem, and I think Vancouver is doing quite well in that respect. Around, in and around Chinatown, lived there for 25 years, you have dozens and dozens of low-income housing for low-income people, dozen. I have a full list here. Many were built recently, many are older one, many are private from churches, organization, co-op, BC housing. You have a full list, and if you had a plan about low-income housing in this city, it's probably the highest concentration in the city. I understand those people who fight for fairness. It's not easy for low-income people, but they are a minority, but we still can fight. But targeting that specific building that I find nice, fitting very well the area according with minor adjustment, what was, I assume, you had many hearing regarding business improvement, or not only business improvement, but planning regarding different neighborhood in this city. Oh my God, time goes fast. So, anyway, so I, that's what I witnessed. Chinatown itself, since I moved in, when I moved in was an area and Strathcona next door. Houses were not painted. There was no renovation. There was no renovation in Chinatown. Building, it got worse and worse and worse for the first 10 years after I moved in. 12, 13 years ago, things started improving, both in Strathcona, Chinatown, and the surrounding area, Crosstown, thanks to the planning of this city. People are happy there. New generation moved it. Every single houses in Strathcona talk about new building, partner renovation in Gastown, the new building on Crosstown. It's so alive. It's so dynamic. There is energy. There is youth. It's beautiful. It's beautiful. I belong there. I lost my hair in Chinatown, so I think I belong there.
Okay. You're over your time?
And what I see is beautiful, absolutely beautiful, and I'm so happy with what's going on there.
Thank you for your comments.
Chinese businesses...
You're way over your time, so I need to cut you off there. If you could, just one sentence to wrap up. One final sentence.
One sentence to wrap up. Yeah, you're right. You're right. Everything went from rundown to a wonderful, dynamic neighborhood, Chinatown, Gastown, Crosstown, Strathcona, through measure that were taken by the city. Lots of it was paid for by taxpayer, gardens, bicycle path, and everything. They are...
Okay. I need you to wrap up.
Five seconds. 500 more business there now, all around. Everything is occupied. Five seconds. Five hundred more business there now, all around. Everything is occupied. It's dynamic and it's beautiful.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for being here to speak tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're on to Speaker number 110. That is Bill Yuen, Heritage Vancouver Society.
Hi, I will be speaking against the development. My name is Bill Yuen. I'm from Heritage Vancouver Society. You may know us as the organization that puts out an annual top 10 endangered list. Last year, we put Chinatown on our top 10 endangered list. It was number three. I'd like to start by talking about heritage conservation. And so, the type of heritage conservation we're talking about is not the conservation of an empty lot. We're not talking about freezing a place in time in Chinatown. And we're not talking about the type of heritage that people like Edward Glazier are against. So, we're not talking about stopping the world from turning, or heritage obstructs progress, or limits new building and growth. Now, heritage is in a phase where, at least in the city, with the, with the Heritage Action Plan updates, it's a broadening of the values beyond historic and aesthetic values. So, a contemporary approach to heritage fully recognizes the state of the world. So, there's massive pressures on cities with population increase, inequality, issues of rights, and access to the city, the environment. And this contemporary approach to heritage deals with this, all these things in a holistic manner. It recognizes layers over time, and it's not just about one moment in the past. Development and heritage can coexist together and be mutually reinforcing. In this case, with this building, we think that what that means is a new development that responds to the context, not just visually, but extends to how people have used the land and inhabit the area, so that they can live the way of life that they value. The, all this is from the Vienna Memorandum and the Florence Declaration, and the Historic Urban Landscape, which is through UNESCO. So, I think that if you use those principles, this building pretty much violates most of these principles and best practices. It fails to respond to the social and cultural and heritage context. I'd like to read a short excerpt from the City of Ottawa Commission Report on Bywood Market, and I will let you know why I'm doing that shortly. Bywood Market is the oldest heritage area in Ottawa. Here we go. Bars, nightclubs, and restaurants dominate the Bywood Market and have come to define the district more than the public market. Residents' needs are losing ground to, ground over tourist needs. Despite the Bywood Market's rich history, the public market, which formed the identity of the area and helped it become the city's number one tourist attraction, is at great risk. The market is struggling to keep farmers and fresh fruit retailers, while other uses such as bars and restaurants predominate, and are displacing the historic uses. We believe that if nothing else is done, the city is in danger of losing the public market forever. So, I read the quote because it's similar to what we're dealing with here. You can just swap out some of the words and put in Vancouver Chinatown condo developments. The second reason why I raise this is because the group that the City of Ottawa commissioned to do this report was Project for Public Places. You may know them as the group that did the placemaking conference last year in Vancouver. They are not a heritage organization. Nonetheless, they speak about the continuation of historic uses and the identity of the area. The third reason, Project for Public Places is a placemaking organization. They believe in creating vibrancy, activity. Nonetheless, they make a distinction between activity that is contextual and activity that is not contextual. So, in Vancouver, there's a distinction between revitalization of the geographic piece of land, which is bordered by Columbia, Hastings, Goran Union, versus the revitalization of Chinatown, which is, versus the revitalization of Chinatown, which is a, not only historic area, but a living community. Here it is in the Chinatown Plan. This is a critical moment in the evolution of Chinatown to ensure revitalization continues. It's socially economically sustainable and maintains or renews the cultural and heritage fabric of the neighborhood. So, I don't think that this fits the context. I think the other day, there was a comment about what the city could do to help Chinatown. One thing the city could do that is very simple and virtually no cost is to enforce its policies for Chinatown. The last thing I want to say is that, there's a lot of talk in the Chinatown Neighborhood Plan about innovation. And I don't have to read, I don't have time to read the quote, but it speaks about, these new buildings have to be innovative. We look at a lot of innovative buildings at the society. We, I seek them out on a daily basis. This building is not innovative, it's not innovative in terms of heritage, and it's not innovative. I think that it's quite difficult with the requirements of profit here to make it innovative.
Okay, thanks. You have Counselor Carr first with questions.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate your, your input as an individual, but as a body as well. Can you tell me what the criteria are for your organization to place a site on your endangered sites list?
I think it would, they would be immediacy and like the sort of, the degree of threat. I think with Chinatown, it's, I think that there's serious threat to Chinatown. You're on the verge of losing Chinatown, because everything that you have, like as I sort of said earlier, it's decontextualized. You don't have anything that responds to the values of Chinatown. You don't have a, this building is not responding to the values of Chinatown. And that's where the innovation comes from, right? When you put a new, it's not about keeping the old, it's about, you put, you have this great chance to put a new building here. So, what do you do? You need to make it respond to the values that are valued by the people in Chinatown.
You mentioned UNESCO and the failure of this building to respond to the cultural context. And, do you know if, is your organization, or are there individuals you know of, who are pursuing UNESCO World Heritage Site designation for Chinatown? I've heard that that's somebody is, but I don't know who.
I hear there's interest in it. We're not pursuing it for Chinatown. Like, they would have, the sort of representatives would have to be in that process, right? But, I think pursuit of the designation is sort of beside the point. I think the point is that the building is not, I think we need to use those, the criteria that UNESCO sets out to guide us with development in historic places. A lot of the guidance that UNESCO puts out is not just for World Heritage Sites. With the Historic Urban Landscape approach, it's for any area to deal with development in a historic neighborhood or city.
So, is the, are the UNESCO criteria around heritage sites stronger than the National Historic Site criteria for development in adjacent areas?
I think that, so the Parks, you mean the Parks Canada, it sounds like that?
I do, yes.
They come from, if you look at the back, they refer to UNESCO's guidance on that.
Oh, they do, okay.
Specifically surrounding cultural landscapes. They use the definitions that UNESCO sets out, three types of cultural landscapes, and they, they sort of set that out in that guidance, so.
Also, so both the Canadian National Historic Site criteria do talk about contextualized development, like what happens adjacent to the actual historic site, just like UNESCO does?
Absolutely, but I think UNESCO, through all its sort of publications and memorandums and things, they go into, they're very, their guidance is very involved. The Canadian ones are more specific to Canada. UNESCO governs the whole world, right?
Do you have access to that information? I mean, is that easy for you to get hold of those criteria, something that you-
I have loads of information on that.
I'm wondering if, before the closure of public input, and if we run through this whole list tonight, if there are not, a lot of people are here and we get through the list, public input might close tonight. But, I'm wondering if you could forward to mayor and council, to all of us, the criteria that UNESCO and National Historic, Parks Canada has for anything related to adjacency, like to the contextual development.
Most definitely.
Thank you, I would really appreciate that.
Counselor Deal, questions?
Yes, thanks very much, and thanks for your work with Heritage Vancouver. You talked a lot about what you don't think is appropriate on the site. I'm curious a little bit about what you do think is appropriate on the site, because I know that in the heritage world, faux heritage is not well looked upon. I think faux Chineseness is not well looked upon by some heritage experts, and that conversation's been had around tables like the Heritage Commission. So, I'm curious as to if you have any concepts of what you think would be a good use of that site.
So, I think with this particular site, it's great that, you know, if, if the, the project team, they want to do a contemporary expression of the, of the building, it's great, it's fine. That's part of the sort of guidance in UNESCO, or even in Parks Canada. What I think we're looking at is, so what sort of values can this building bring out that are Chinatown values?
Exactly.
Right? So, so let me give you an example of sort of places with values, right? Last week, there was a talk at SFU on affordable housing for Vienna. The image, the promotional image for that building, for that talk, there's a building, it's in Vienna, it's called Sarg Fabrik. That building has exceptional permeability between private and public spaces. There's a lot of spaces where the public can do things, and the, and the people who live above the building can come down and do things together. There's talks, there's a, Viennese people, they like their hot springs, so they have one of those there. That building also has a sister building. And that sister building, the way that it was designed, the philosophy for that building is, they value public space more than private space. And so, they have these walkways, and in order to get to your unit, you have to go through the walkways, but your unit is all glass. And that philosophy is because they want everybody to see each other, right? There's another building in Ottawa, it's called Beaver Barracks. It used to be an Air Force Base barracks. It was converted into social housing. The, the theme of, the environment is very strong there. So, they have a lot of gardens where people grow things. There's a very strong program on recycling, how to grow things, making, growing things from seeds, activities there. And they go into, they sell the produce at the market. So, they have a very strong theme. So, you can take these values that Chinatown has, I think you'd have to do an exercise in what those values are. I extrapolate from the sort of planning documents that, that you have for Chinatown. So, some of these values would be intergenerational interaction, intercultural interaction, affordability is a big one of them. So, if you can put all those values and, and put this into the building, that'd be really innovative. And I don't think it's just about the building. It's about the process at arriving, how you're gonna get this building. So, something innovative that you can do, like there's a lot of projects now where the inclusiveness, the inclusiveness of the public in designing this building is a key feature of, of the project. There's a project in Washington where I think there was three or four different language groups. They were brought together, and they were, they were giving, you know, these, these lessons about architecture. And they had a, they had a role in shaping how this place was, was built, which is not something that we have here. So, you can do with a building, you can do with the process, how you arrive at the building.
It's very useful. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Ball?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Yuen. Thank you for coming in tonight and for your work at the Heritage Vancouver Society.
Thank you.
It's greatly appreciated. I have a question. I'm trying to put things into context and understand, because we've been here for many years. And for a number of years, we had people coming from Chinatown expressing frustration that there weren't people there to purchase the goods in Chinatown and keep, keep the businesses alive and afloat. And why weren't we building market housing? Why weren't we encouraging market housing to be built there? And so, I'm, I'm interested if you feel that that is no longer a concern, or given the, the feeling about this particular building that you've expressed, whether you still don't, whether you feel there is still a need for market housing? Because at the time, they wanted people to move back from Richmond, come back to Chinatown, and re-inhabit Chinatown, because it had lost a number of folks who had lived there for years, but had moved to Richmond. And so, what could we do with Chinatown? And that's a number of the planning exercises working with the people in Chinatown that have been done by the city over the years. So, I'm just wondering, what has changed in terms of that desire to have more market housing there? Because a number of times, people, people would say, well, we want people who are successful, who, who will come back here and, and, you know, purchase here and be part of the community. And so, as well as social housing, which is always important in any neighborhood. So, I'm just wondering if you can tell me.
So, I can speak for them, but in, to my mind, the, the original character of Chinatown in terms of housing was not market housing. It's affordable rental. And I, I realized that in the, in the Chinatown Neighborhood Plan, that, you know, one of the, one of the sort of goals was to bring in market housing, which I don't necessarily think is, is bad. I think you have an issue with the degree and the, the quantity of market housing that's being, being brought in. If you look at the location of this particular building in this area, so, within 200 to 300 meters, you have three other exceptionally large buildings on Main and Kiefer that are market housing. You have two upstream coming, which is next door to the 105 Kiefer site, you know, the one, there's this fancy one with the, the fancy underground parking with the, the turntable elevator thing. So, I think you want to consider how much market housing you actually want to concentrate in this very small area. With market housing comes a very different demographic, because by, by its nature, these people have more money. And so, I think if, if you don't sort of think about how market housing is gonna fit into this space, in the context of all these other market housing buildings, then it's a problem, because you're, you're changing the nature of the character of that, that space. You're changing, people who need affordable housing, which Chinatown is supposed to be about, can't get it.
I see. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, that's all your questions. Thanks very much for being here tonight. And next up, Speaker 111, David Wong. David Wong is next, followed by 112, Megan Lau.
O C M. Thank you, your worship, Mayor Robertson, and respected councilors. My name is David Wong. I'm a man of heart, Wong, eighteen. That's my Cantonese name for Wong, see the sky. My family has been in Vancouver, North America, for many generations, since the 1800s. I, I feel that we have a, a connection to the city. And I like to speak as, what I do as a professional, which is an architect. I'm also pleased to inform that I used to work for the City of Vancouver here, and in the planning department. So, I'd like to lend some of my experience into my dissertation here. One of the things I want to speak about is sustainability. We all talk about sustainability, environmental sustainability, seems to be the only one we are all familiar with. We're missing out on a really important one, that's social sustainability. We don't hear anything much about social sustainability. This is what has occurred now in the last few, in the last couple decades. We talk about Vancouver's Chinatown, other areas in downtown east side, for example, we never hear anything about social impact assessment. What happens to the people who are vulnerable and who are being displaced? I look at the reports generated by our, our planning department, nowhere on the entire document is any talk about what happens to the people. This is the number one thing that's been missing in this entire effort. So, we can talk about a city being sustainable, but we actually have missed the mark. That's my first point. And I can back this up by referring to Vancouver Sun News article from, I think, November 2013, where our reporter John Mackey had interviewed a senior city planner about what happens to the displacement of the 900-plus seniors living in Chinatown. Response from the senior official was that, well, these folks don't contribute to the economic revitalization of Chinatown. So, that sort of seems to underscore the city. And that's why I'm standing here today, because I am a bit perturbed that none of this has ever come to the surface. About 10 years ago, I tried to make an effort, and I sat, I stood here in front of council and said, we have assets here in the city, retired planners, retired civil servants, who are willing to come in here and help mentor the staff. Because we're, right now, in a very interesting point in our city's history. There's a lot of money, a lot of global capital coming in, and at the same time, there's been a lot of retirements from the city. been a lot of retirements from the city. And a lot of development, a lot of demand, all these things are happening at the nexus of our city, and there's no real plan for it. And what we have today is the outcome of, I would call, unforeseen planning. And we need to address this immediately. I can, I will, I won't talk as an architect, but I'll talk more as, as how I experienced in the planning department when we had the same difficult situation. We had to go back to the zoning bylaw and to look at what the guiding policies are. And from the policies, we look at the elements that help build the framework. And right here, in black and white, very clear in HA1 and HA1A zoning district, it says, and I quote, "The intent of the schedule is to encourage the preservation and rehabilitation of the significant early builds of Chinatown while recognizing the evolving activities that make this district an asset." So we have an asset over here, but we've done little to actually protect it, and it's not too late. And I can go on and talk about all these things, but from the developer's perspective, he's not doing anything wrong. He's doing what he's allowed to do. But I do have an issue of the rezoning application itself. If you look at HA1, it's to protect the historic district, more or less around Pendle Street. And HA1A was sort of the area outside it. So, we gave the HA1A area a little bit of a lift, a little higher density, from 75 feet in HA1 to 90 feet. And I can't believe my eyes, when I read, the guy's asking for 115 feet, we're already given a nice lift already. So why are we even entertaining this rezoning application? Well, I've got a lot more to say, but I--
You have questions, too?
Yes, just rented questions.
Okay, go to councillor Carr for questions.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you so much for coming. I am very interested in the comment you made about social impact assessments. In your experience, either within the planning department or with other projects you've pursued as an architect, do jurisdictions, has the city thought about doing social impact assessments as a regular part of analyzing a development project? And if not, are there particular kinds of projects or locations where you think this might be more appropriate to do as a regular part of planning analysis?
It's done all over the world. I've worked on affordable housing in Germany, New Zealand, Australia, and the U.S. It's done everywhere. I'm very surprised that it's not undertaken here, B.C. And it's usually to areas where the, we know there's going to be some market change, because it's an area that's depressed, and, and there's a great potential for depressed areas to be lifted up, which means it's a soft target. When there's a soft target, that means the people are the most vulnerable, and that's why it's really that much more important to ask this question. What happens during the interim when things are getting changed?
Okay, so if you were to do a social impact assessment, or if you were to design one for this project, what kinds of factors or measurements or criteria would you want to include in that kind of an assessment?
It's very simple, what happens to the people currently living there. If they're displaced, they have to go somewhere. So now we have these homeless encampments, and you can't blame the people. And for us, it's very shameful that we are trying to, as a city, remove these people. They have every right to be here. So I look at these things, and we only bring these problems upon ourselves, but not doing a proper assessment.
That's very interesting. Okay, your second point was about the height, that there was already a give on the height up to 90 feet, right, from 75 to 90 feet. So would it have been your advice, given the context of adjacency to Chinatown, that there be no allowance for any increase, that it's just a--
I would take it down to 75 feet. Because when this was, you have to remember, the context when these zoning regulations were prepared was at a time when we actually didn't anticipate this. And this is one of the drawbacks, is that we don't keep things up to current situation. We have to always come back and reassess the tools we have in place and bring up the current, you know, standards and--
Yeah. I don't know when you were here at the city, so I don't know if you were part of this process, but, or whether you know about it, but if you know about it, I'm very curious as to why, at one point prior to 2011, when the heights were changed up to 90 feet, prior to that, council had made a decision that they would not contemplate higher than 75 feet in this area, this sort of triangle area here. Do you have any knowledge about why council changed its own mind and went from 75 feet to 90 feet?
To encourage development, because, you know, if you look at Chinatown, this is sort of the, the, sort of the back end of Chinatown, because in the old days, Pendle Street was sort of the main drag.
Right.
And we're looking at Kiefer, Georgia, Union Street, sort of the smaller siblings. So they wanted to do something to encourage development. And now we, because there's a scarcity to land, there's great demand on it now. So we should have come back to this and addressed it earlier.
Interesting, thank you very much, I really appreciate your important being here.
Yeah. Oh, the other thing I wanted to add was that the, there also should have been a, what's that word, a cost-benefit assessment for, for the city to actually understand what we're giving away and what we're receiving. And what we are losing is quite a bit. We actually are gifting this little thing to someone else, and there's no public benefit in this at all.
Now, are cost-benefit analyses done in the other jurisdictions you work in?
Uh, yes, yep, we always do it, because you have to know, you can't trade horses unless you know what you have in place.
Interesting.
Right?
Yeah, I'd love to, as a councillor, I mean, I don't know if it can be part of this hearing, but it'd be interesting to receive information about both of those, from your experience internationally and other jurisdictions, on the social impact assessments that are commonly used in other jurisdictions, and also the cost-benefit analyses to do with development.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's your questions, thank you very much, Mr. Wong, for being here.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is 112, Megan Lau, followed by Marilyn Mortimer-Lam. Good evening.
Good evening. And where do I check my time?
Uh, there's a little screen next to there, yeah.
Okay, thank you, and you can hear me fine? All right. Mayor and council, my name is Megan Lau, and I am speaking today as an individual and a resident of Vancouver. I'd like to acknowledge that we're on the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Swaylottu people. I'm thankful to be able to speak here tonight, as I remain strongly opposed to the rezoning in this project, as I have over the last three years. I've worked and volunteered in Chinatown, and was part of the organizing team for the revitalization of the Vancouver Chinatown Night Market in 2013. When my family moved to Vancouver in 1989, visiting Vancouver was a weekly ritual, one that connected me to my heritage and my culture. So much has been lost in Chinatown because of the type of development that has happened on Main Street in the last three years. The transformation of this neighborhood is not unlike what has happened in San Francisco's Mission District, Bed-Stuy in Brooklyn, or the East Village in New York. So what happens to our Chinatown? What about the lives of people who have to leave? What happens when they can no longer afford or sustain a life in a place that they call home? Are we a city that loves to preserve its murals and evict its muralists? After all, do we need more complete, do we need more state-of-the-art gym wear, designer dogs, and customized bathing rollers? This is what the proponents of this project mean when they say safe, when they say they're cleaning up Chinatown. They equate being low income with being less than. I've read the letters of support for this development that are being considered as part of this hearing. One is the owner of a luxury candle company, another is a high-end spin studio where classes are $25 to drop in. These are people who are not connected to the lives, the needs, and the priorities of the Chinatown community. It angers me that they claim that 25 units of housing and a recreation center are enough for Chinatown's elders. As others have noted, a senior recreation center is needed, and if so, then we as Vancouverites should realize this amenity and not make its creation dependent on developers. The same letter of support I just mentioned also emphasizes exercise, walkability, and car-free living as a benefit of this development. These are things that the residents and the elders of Chinatown in this community already have and are doing for decades. I'd also like to speak to those that support this development, because they wish to be homeowners. The city government has made addressing housing and homelessness a priority. So let us be clear that these two crises are related, but they are not the same. Therefore, the solutions are not the same. Facilitating homeownership for some middle-class professionals does not help, house the most impoverished. Because of rising housing costs and stagnant wages, poor renting families in the city spend the majority of their income on housing costs. In tandem with the province's tax breaks for homeownership, continuing to allow development like this in Chinatown gives affluent people more opportunities to acquire wealth, and renters who are disproportionately poor get nothing and are no closer to finding safe or secure housing. Chinatown used to be a place where people of all incomes could find sustenance, community, and Chinese culture. These things were cultivated and protected by the community's resilience, resistance, and pragmatism. For some time, people from my community were simply not allowed to live anywhere else. Now you are telling us we cannot stay, and some of us have nowhere to go. At a time when your colleagues here at City Hall are currently engaging in research about the historical discrimination against Chinese people in Vancouver, I hope you can see the connection between what has come before and the reason why so many of us are here tonight to reject this development at 105 Kiefer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. No questions? Okay, our next speaker is 113, thanks for coming, Marilyn Mortimer-Lam is our next speaker, 113. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor and council, my name is Marilyn Mortimer-Lam. I had the honor of working as an assistant to Joe Wei, architect, for over 26 years. I am here to oppose the 105 Kiefer proposal. I've lived in Vancouver all my life and have witnessed monumental change. The character of many of our city's neighborhoods has been compromised and forever lost. I urge you not to let this happen to one of our national treasures, that we are so privileged to have right here in our backyard, Vancouver's historic Chinatown. If this BD project is to go ahead, I truly believe that the fabric of our Chinatown community and character would quickly unravel to that of a generic area, and would only be kept alive through the Chinese seniors telling their grandchildren of what once was. Building a scaled-down and scaled-back building in the historic context and character of the neighborhood, one which would contain a greater percentage of Chinese seniors' housing that the residents could actually afford, is the most appropriate purpose for this site. Low-income seniors' housing is desperately required in this community. Developing this significant site carries an enormous responsibility, for the end development could either undermine the community and the character of this historic area, or this great opportunity could be used to instead build a project that responds to the community's needs, and not merely provide a token eight units of possibly affordable housing, and 17 more that are out of most of the seniors' reach. Joe Wei, architect, was a passionate advocate of the Chinese community, and retaining his beloved Chinatown's historic character, excuse me, was foremost to his career. As Joe is no longer with us today, having passed away earlier this year on January 11th, the day after attending the last rezoning meeting on this site, I would like to read the letter that he wrote to the Urban Design Panel dated January 6th. Dear Urban Design Panel Chair and Members, this fourth rezoning application of the 105 Kiefer Street project in the HA1A zone contains the same issues as the last applications, that is, the neglect of real response to community concerns. Simply put, the height, bulk, and very nominal allowance for community use. The Chinatown Memorial Plaza was very minimally revised and not sufficient for the community purpose of its existence. With no current FSR limitation in HA1A, height is the critical guideline for density. The City of Vancouver Council's 2010 resolution was very specific about the limitation of height. Although the height has been slightly reduced to 115 feet, the subsequent, quotes, revision did not get wide nor particular notification. The allowable discretionary height above 90 feet to a maximum of 120 feet was intended for the south side of Kiefer Street. The seniors' housing has remained at 25 units without a specific indication of whether they are being sold to B.C. Housing, brackets, since being declined by a nonprofit group, bracket, for the core needy or affordable rental. I trust that you will consider the issues above when reviewing the application and make the right decision. Chinatown requires your leadership to ensure that development, such as this application in this crucial historic area, serves to build communities first and not just to maximize profit. Yours very truly, Joe Wei, architect. Thank you.
All right, thank you, you have a question? You have a question from councillor Carr?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much, I appreciate you coming. I did read that letter, that was from Mr. Wei to the Urban Design Panel. And I'm curious about one thing, and I did ask staff about this, I read that piece where he said, the conditional height was intended to be for the south side of the street, not this particular location. And so, I'm wondering where he made, why he made that assumption? Do you, were you familiar enough?
I'm sorry, I'm not, the person that's following me, speaking, is an architect, and she knows the answer to that, I believe.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for being here tonight. Next speaker is 114, Chi Wan. Chi Wan, followed by Wilkins Chen. Good evening.
Do I have to do anything?
No, you're all set.
Mayor and councillors, my name is Chi Wan, architect, worked with Joe Wei for over 26 years on many Chinatown and the social housing projects. I oppose this rezoning application. You already heard my colleagues' comments, I just focus on my three concerns. First, the site is in heart of important cultural building and the space in Chinatown, it's next to the Chinese Military Museum, Dr. Tsing-Amsen's Garden, and Memorial Plaza. In relation to those cultural buildings, this proposed development is too tall for the site. In HA1A zoning, there is no FSR limitation, the height is most the critical requirement to fit into this historical Chinatown area. If the height criteria is not respected, Chinatown will not be a Chinatown. We already have seen the two recently rezoned buildings on Main Street, they are now too tall for the area context. This proves how important it is to keep the building height in order to protect Chinatown character. We should not make the same mistake again. Second, this site is next to Memorial Plaza, where Chinatown Night Market and many other community events take place. The proposed hundred, 1,000 square foot of community room space is too small. 1,000 square foot, it seems like a very large area for lots of seniors I talked to. But in fact, it's too, it's much less than the envisioned, the actual space will be for their purpose. Also, the ground floor should have more open space to the public. My third point is 20, my third point is 25 small rooms for seniors are not enough. You have heard overwhelming demand for social housing for Chinese seniors. I'm urging you to listen to the community needs, vote no to this rezoning, and please take this unique opportunity to build more housings for Chinese seniors. I'm afraid that some of issues are not being made clear to the seniors who are supporting this proposal. For example, affordability and allocated space, they have not been made aware of the repercussion of this development and the loss opportunity for them. Mayor and councillor, your no vote to this rezoning project will go down in Vancouver-Chinatown history. Please protect Chinatown and its community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, you have questions from councillor Carr?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, yes, I-- Yes, I have two questions. My first, which I was posing to your colleague, is really around the statement that was made by Mr. Wei in the letter he wrote recently, like in January, to the Urban Design Panel, that stated the height, the increased height or conditional height up to 12 stories was not really intended for this site. It was intended for the south side.
In the early 19s, I believe, that was when we talking about the increase of building height is mostly applied to when we talk about the movement of building height from City Gate.
Yes.
Move into Chinatown. That’s what our understanding, what this intent is.
Okay.
And this site is very sensible to the community.
Okay, so that was your understanding at the firm?
Yes.
Okay. The second question that I have arose out of your other comments, or your final comments, where you said that some of the people who came to speak to this public hearing may not be fully informed, and particularly about the trade-off in terms of lost opportunity. What did you mean by lost opportunity?
When I talk to the seniors actually, I do speak Chinese. Some of them, like I don’t think they actually understand why people oppose of this development because we are opposing this project. It’s not because we don’t want more senior amenity space, we want more senior amenity space. And when they were talking about the space, the amenity space they would get, they have no clue how big the space is. It’s 1,000 square feet. It will not even accommodate real organization or some of the activity they were envisioning, what they were going to have over there.
Okay, yes, I was actually looking at the drawings and noticed that there were two options for the seniors’ activity space, two different configurations of the ground-level commercial spaces, one of which will be leased to, if this project goes ahead, to the seniors’ coalition. And I couldn’t tell the size at all, but it looked like they were the smaller ones.
I think it’s 12,000 square feet. It’s quite small, actually.
Okay, and there’s eight units.
It’s a little bigger than my, same size as my office.
Okay, 1,000 square feet. And in your experience, I mean, I’d have a chance to ask anybody else because they might not come to speak, but in your experience, I think the desire was to maybe even put on some Chinese operas. I mean, I have no idea what kind of space is needed for this kind of thing. Is 1,000 square feet insufficient or okay? I have no idea.
Maybe you can make a rehearsal there.
A rehearsal?
A small rehearsal. But I don’t think you can do any presentation there.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak. And our next speaker is Wilkins Chan, speaker 115, followed by Henry Yu.
I’m not Wilkins, but I’m number 126, and I really have to get to Tiko practice, and I was wondering if I could trade.
Is Wilkins here to trade with?
He’s not here.
Yeah, we don’t, we can only do trades if there’s two people here that agree to do that.
Okay.
So if you can find someone else who’s
Okay, whoever’s after.
Who’s on the list, that’s the best. Otherwise, it turns into a bit of a free-for-all. Wilkins Chan is not here. Okay, we’ll go to Henry Yu. Is Henry Yu here? Yes.
Hi, Mayor, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Some of you know me, but for those who don’t, I’m Henry Yu. I’m a historian at UBC. I researched Chinese, Canadian, and Canadian history, as well as migration history, with a particular role in the role, or a particular interest in the role of heritage and historical memory in community building. It’s my scholarly research. I’ve served for the last two years as the co-chair of the Province of British Columbia’s Bipartisan Legacy Initiative’s Advisory Council, following the 2014 provincial apology for historical anti-Chinese discrimination, a process that led to the designation of Chinatown as a provincial heritage site of significance in 2016, so that all three levels of government now recognize the importance of Vancouver’s Chinatown as a heritage site. I also serve on the advisory group for the Examination of Historical Discrimination Against Chinese Peoples for the City of Vancouver, a process which is having open houses right now, as many of you know. 12 years ago, served on the advisory committee for the original historical study of society buildings in Chinatown. That was part of the lead-up to the Chinatown vision, as well as of taking part. I go into this detail just to say that I come here as a private citizen. I was born in Vancouver in 1967, as well as a scholar whose research is on heritage and in particular on Chinatown, and many of my students are working in various capacities in Chinatown. I’ve never lived in Chinatown myself, but my parents did, my grandfather did, so it’s a place dear to my heart. It’s one of the reasons why I’m a community volunteer for so long in the place. It remains an enduring touchstone for who we are, we have been, and I hope who we will be in Vancouver. You know, I’m 50, so you can figure if you’re older or younger than me, but I’ve lived for a third of all of Canada’s history. If you think of it that way, I was born in 1967, for the first two-thirds of Canada’s history. It’s a very different place. In 1967, we finally removed racial preference from our immigration policy, the year I was born. In 1947, we finally allowed Chinese to vote. Up until that moment, all three levels of government used the power of the state to make Chinese second-class citizens. There was places they could not buy land, they could not get city contracts, they could not live in certain neighborhoods. You could not, someone was telling me, all their memories of movies when they were young, it seemed like they were looking down on the movie, it’s because they were only allowed to watch from the balcony in a movie theater. That history is our history. Chinatown was a product of that history, and it reminds us, as no other place can, of who we are. If we forget that history, if we erase it in our admirable aspirations to become a better society, we are in fact doing the opposite. We cannot know how far we have come unless we know from where we began. I think of people like Fung Sin Wong, like Nell Yip, recently both honored with federal plaques. Roy Ma and other Chinese, Canadian vets who fought for Canada even as they were treated as second-class citizens. They knew that society is not just if there is not justice for all, but only for some. And so they have made us a better society, for all of us, not just for themselves. They weren’t doing selfishly, this is just for Chinese, just for ourselves. We were a better society because of their struggles. Chinatown is a touchstone for that history. If you lose that, how are you going to storytell? How are you going to tell future generations the dark past that we have overcome? I’ve seen a letter supporting the rezoning of 105 Kiefer called “those who opposed it a vocal minority. Others have dismissed the youthful energy of opponents as somehow naive or unreasonable.” Perhaps those who ask for justice, to plead with others to do the right thing, will always sound too vocal and unreasonable. But I would rather stand with those who speak a truth that will last, those who are remembered for being on the right side of history. That’s where we are right now, at a moment that is pivotal. Hundreds of people have signed up to speak to you. It’s your decision to make. I’m reminded, as a historian, the parallels between this moment and the freeway fight 50 years ago. I wasn’t around. None of you look old enough to have been around either, or maybe you were kids. But the freeway fight defined this city. It’s made it the way it is right now.
So you’re over your time. If you could wrap up in a sentence?
I want to just make three quick points to put
Actually, you’re over five already, so respecting everyone’s time.
We owe Chinatown because the freeway stopped the development of the city as a city that would empty out its downtown. So we have high density, it’s a livable city, that’s one. It’s about the future, not the past. We’re not trying to freeze Chinatown, we’re trying to keep it as a touchstone. The third and the final point I’ll make, sometimes doing nothing is the best. The developer wants to make a rezoning change. On this one, doing nothing is just to say no, and that may be the best for it. I’m happy to share any expertise that I’ve gained in looking at cities all around the world and their historical development, as well as their heritage development practices, and what is the best in UNESCO practices and intangible heritage characteristics, but I wanted to make that personal to you.
That’s great, thanks. You got questions from councillor Carr?
Please.
Thank you so much. I’m really appreciative of you coming and all the work that you’ve done. When you talked about historical injustice and prejudice, you didn’t mention the city, but shamefully, the city was involved in that too, in terms of disallowing people of Chinese heritage from owning property or even renting property in parts of the city. But we’re in today, and I am, as you’ve probably heard from some of my questions, very interested in the kinds of guidelines that are provided by authorities such as UNESCO around heritage sites. And so if you could provide any input right now around what UNESCO would ask us to do as a best practice in the protection of heritage site, I’d appreciate it.
Sure, we could do it very quickly. There’s heritage experts like Bill Yun, who also know a lot, but there’s been a long-term desire to propose that Vancouver’s Chinatown be a UNESCO World Heritage Site. Just give you how that happens and what’s the, you know, to answer your question. And knowledge from Penang, Malacca, Kaiping, many other successful proposals. One thing I think would be very useful in terms of a UNESCO World Heritage Site proposal is that they demand a management conservation plan for the area. So we have right now, unfortunately, the city of Vancouver, unlike the province and the federal level, they follow UNESCO guidelines. So cultural intang, or intangible culture as part of the heritage is part of the provincial and the federal guidelines that follow UNESCO. The city of Vancouver at this present time does not. We do not have tangible policy that allows us to actually manage intangible cultural assets and others in ways that, you know, would be demanded, for instance, by UNESCO World Heritage Site proposal. And so, again, one of the things that I hope is useful about this kind of exercise is to actually get together all the stakeholders that matter and to put together a proposal that says, how are we going to use this space that we’ve all, at three levels of government, designated as a heritage site? How do we conserve it? How do we develop it so that it’s a vibrant place? There’s a lot of false oppositions that have been thrown around by, you know, people over the last few days, as if heritage and development are impossible to do together. You can have both. It’s been proven in multiple World Heritage Sites that UNESCO has designated, and it’s because, as part of the proposal, they don’t just say, are your buildings old? Okay, you’re a heritage site. How are you going to manage these? Do you have a business plan for actually maintaining these spaces? Do you have a business plan for tourism? Do you have a business plan for the people who live there already? How are you going to, you know, balance things like density, you know, and development versus the people who live over there already? So I think one of the things I’d like to see, you know, having, again, volunteered and worked, you know, for the city for free for quite a few years now, is to see actually us come together. There’s so much energy that you’ve seen. I mean, I’ve been watching live streaming. I’d love to see the numbers on the live streaming alone, on how many people are watching us on a Friday night, you know, talk to each other. That kind of political will and energy, I think you can, you know, do a win-win coming out of this, rather than a lose-lose. And so looking forward, I think, is the way to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That’s your questions? Thanks, Mr. Yu. So Kiku Hawks is our next speaker, 117. Kiku Hawks, welcome, followed by Priscilla Tate.
Moving around by itself. Good evening, Mayor and members of council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. I’d like to acknowledge that we stand on unceded First Nations territories and to thank the Squamish, Musqueam, Tsleil-Waututh peoples for permission to be here. My name is Kiku Hawks, and I’m speaking as a longtime resident of Strathcona. I’ve raised two kids there. I’m an artist, I’m a faculty member at Emily Carr. I have been documenting the neighborhood of Strathcona and of Chinatown for probably well over 30 years. I do not see them as separate. I see Chinatown as my shopping district, one of them, and I’ve been very distressed over what has been going on there. In an effort to be proactive, I decided to attend all of the open houses and to try and engage with this process, instead of just basically being, sitting around and getting quite pissed off. After the first open house, I wrote a five-page letter to City Hall detailing not only flaws in their process, but I also listed a number of design elements that I thought would make this building more palatable to the community and would work better in Chinatown itself. I’m going to say something that I’ve heard over and over and over over the last couple of days of hearings. The city is missing a wonderful opportunity here. I thought I was the only one who knew that, but apparently a lot of other people agree. Traffic could be removed from Columbia Street between Kiefer and Pender Streets, creating a park, an extension of Tsing-Ah Sun Garden that was publicly available. As densification proceeds, we need refuges from the noise and the bustle. We could create a linear park, a walking street. Now, as to the building itself, the building should be stepped back and the west facade made slightly lower than the east gate of Tsing-Ah Sun Garden, and there are some very specific reasons for that, which I’d be happy to speak to later. The building’s cladding should mirror that of the gardens. Rather than the glass, the faux brick, and the lip service red of those steel balconies, the surface should be of some contemporary cream-colored adobe-type material accented with dark wood. The maximum height to the east should be no greater than the Kiefer Block building, and the north and the south façade should be crenellated to break the mass. The rooftop garden should also mirror Tsing-Ah Sun Gardens and have a place to grow produce. So those were things that I all suggested to the city when I made a real point of talking to the architects, the architects assistants, blah, 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 et cetera. Everybody thought they were really interesting ideas, nobody had ever heard of them before. Kind of an interesting process. Now, as to the building itself in this site, earlier this year, as part of a collaborative installation for this year’s Capture Festival, I worked with two maps from the city’s archive. And I just want to do a little footnote here to say that the archive is a treasure trove, and thank you to the city for maintaining it. It’s incredibly valuable. So I worked with a 1937 hand-drawn rendering of traditional First Nations territories and place names map, and I overlaid that with a 1911 commissioned map of the city of the same area. The shift in land use was dramatic, and it was heartbreaking. Within 30 years or less, First Nations lands vanished under a grid of settlers’ homes, businesses, and people were displaced. What happened to the First Nations people is somewhat analogous to current housing policy in East Vancouver, that we are able to recognize injustice in one place or time, but cannot transfer that knowledge nor perceive the same dynamic in a different situation is heartbreaking as well. We need to grow up here a little faster. It is this fundamental understanding of the effect that wealth can have on land use that has prompted recent policy changes in both civic and provincial governments. Yet this council has so far been unwilling to act while large amounts of wealth are exported into East Vancouver via individuals and their corporations, and I’m speaking of local people, not offshore assets coming in. Strathcona and Chinatown have borne the brunt of this transfer, and the BD proposal is one such effort by a company best known for one- and two-story industrial parks and a few small suburban townhouse projects.
Ms. Hawks, that’s your time, if you want to wrap up with a sentence?
Okay. I just wanted to, this is about political will, and I wanted to just mention that the reason people go in circles when they’re lost is because whichever side of the body is dominant is dominant is the side you're going to go to. And we have been pulling in this city in one direction for a long time, and it's time to try the other direction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you have no speak, no questions, so thanks for coming this evening. Our next speaker is Priscilla Tate. See any movement, so then we'll move to Ha Li. Doris Chow.
Yes, hello. My name is Doris Chow, and I oppose the rezoning of 105 Kiefer. During the Historic Area Heights Review, also known as the HHR, councillor Meggs himself warned everybody that densification does not equal revitalization. Despite that warning, on page 10 of the HHR, it says, and I quote on page 10, "General consensus was reached in Chinatown to allow moderate increases as part of the residential intensification strategy to revitalize the neighborhood." The original intent of this residential intensification, as some have already spoken in the last couple nights, was to have more warm bodies in Chinatown and people with higher incomes to support the businesses. Have these new units, or sorry, excuse me. However, in recent years, we have seen an increase of up to 700 or 800 new units of housing in Chinatown. My question is, have any of these new units really achieved what was intended? And if so, then why is the city looking at strategies to protect longtime mom-and-pop shops through the Historic Neighborhood Business Research request for proposals? In the request for proposal, sorry, I forgot to note what page it was on, but there is a quote that says, "Throughout 2015 and 2016, several retail assets with longstanding ties to the communities of Chinatown, Oppenheimer, and Strathcona were displaced or forced to close." If the residential intensification theory were true, then shouldn't the businesses have been thriving? And I also further want to question, with all the contention around this particular site and the densification being proposed here, why this location? The northeast Falls Creek emerging directions, which is about two or three blocks away from this site, there are, the city states that the city-owned blocks alone could generate approximately 850,000 square foot of density, representing 1,000 units, including 200 to 300 affordable housing units, not to mention the St. Paul's Hospital that will be coming into the neighborhood. Isn't that enough densification? Also, I would state that on page two of the Historic Area Heights Review, and I quote, "For every supported higher building, a significantly higher standard of architectural and urban design excellence will be required." Yet the application was not supported by the Chinatown Historic Area Planning Committee, and despite the vote of support by the Urban Design Panel on page two of Appendix E, the panel expressed levels of concern and opposition. Is that excellence? Some young people have also spoken, saying that they want the opportunity to buy in the neighborhood, or that we need more housing supply in order to address affordability. A simple search on Craigslist for Chinatown features executive suites and short-term stays for, quote, "minimum 30-day stay" or "six-to-12-month leases." Is this affordability? Recent City of Vancouver Housing Vancouver Strategy reset says, "Vancouver does not just need supply, we need the right supply." I appreciate that BD tried to introduce more family units in this proposal. But the recommendation from the City of Vancouver reset was to set affordability targets by income range instead of type of housing supply. Is that not an option? On April 2016, City of Vancouver approved the Affordable Home Ownership Program, which included the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, which could include selling 20% of the units below market and including a secure mechanism for maintaining a level of affordability over time, i.e., for example, a resale covenant. That sounds pretty good to me. The young people could definitely afford it then. Regarding the 25 housing units, on page 18 of the staff report, it says that BC Housing committed to funding the purchase of the 25 units. It begs the question, why this location? If BD is not paying for the units, then they could be anywhere. I recently read an article saying that the Vancouver Chinatown Foundation is looking to put seniors' housing above the BMO Building on 168 Pender. What good are these units in itself? Do we want to be like Washington DC Chinatown? And lastly, I want to say a note about community economic development. Some have said that, what is the point of Chinatown? That there are so many retail hubs emerging across Vancouver, like Victoria and Richmond, drawing away from Chinatown, but that is not our asset anymore. The City of Vancouver CED Strategy on page 29 notes, "The diverse and unique cultural heritage character of the area is recognized as a critical asset needing protection." And the accelerated-
That's your time.
Okay.
I've given you some extra time already.
Can I just wrap up?
Yep.
And the accelerated implementation of Chinatown, the, sorry, and the policy 6.3.1 states that we should be accelerating the implementation of the Chinatown Economic Revitalization Strategy, which I have here if you want to see. Young people have highlighted these-
You're well over, so thank you for your time. You have no further questions? So thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Angela Wen. Angela Wen, so we'll move, Angela Wen. Okay, next we have Wilson Munoz.
Wilson Munoz, Coalition of Progressive Electors and member of the Fundraising, Communications, and Housing Committee. I oppose the rezoning of 105 Kiefer Street. And I would like to add that this presentation is out of leadership, transparency, and influence by political donations. We have seen more than 100 speakers, and everybody has been asking, City Council should meet the people, City Council should come to the people. I've been outside for nine months, nobody from City Council have come and spoken to us about why we are outside demanding social housing, affordable housing. I remember in December, before the budget was approved, I talked to councillor Fleck about the budget, that that wasn't the proper budget. And also councillor Carr came to one of the presentations. Thank you for coming. But again, the city has to show leadership. The city has to meet the people. The city has to address the concern of Chinatown. We have two councillors, Raymond Louis and Kerry Young. They should be meeting these people. We don't need to bring them here, which would save resources and time and acknowledge the contribution of Chinese Canadians to Vancouver. Instead of trying to decimate Chinatown, instead of trying to impoverish Chinatown, instead of trying to bring a cycle of poverty, displacement, and gentrification, we should be helping, we should be acknowledging, instead of imposing not a health tax, but imposing a social tax on these people, a symbolic health tax, we should be acknowledging what they have contributed to the city. If we remember what Jean Swanson said about being a retired person and getting $1,400 a month, many of the retired people and low-income seniors in Chinatown won't have access to that type of pension, because they haven't been in Canada for 40 years. So affordable housing is out of the sight, although at one point, Mr. Kerry Young mentioned, what is affordability? And I believe that's the problem for City Council. He said, affordable is something you can afford, but in this case, it's being dictated by the developers, it's being dictated by the market. So the city needs to be, needs to show some political will, and needs to really work with the communities, not to abandon the community. You have a political mandate that has been provided by the people. In this case, you are abandoning the Chinese community. You are not listening to the Chinese community. It's not just people from other communities who have come here and say, this is not right. You have architects, you have historians, you have young people, you have seniors who have come, and even seniors who didn't speak any English. They ask you when you were heading, on Tuesday, I was here, and ask you for more time. They were not provided with more time. That's really sad. City Council, you have more empathy for the people. Probably, it's a system change, we need a systemic change. Probably, City Council, the vision-dominated council, and the mayor are tired of being in power. So we need to replace the council, because the council doesn't want to work with the people. It doesn't matter what people say, it doesn't matter what people ask. Let's look at the SROs. The SRO is another issue in the city. It is affecting the city, council is doing nothing. People are using their bathtub as toilet, because they don't have working toilets, because they don't have working elevators. So what's happening with City Council? Again, transparency, the influence of political donations. We have the BD group, and I understand they donated to Vision more than $60,000. So we need to remove the influence of political donations from the city, and the city has to show more leadership, working with the community group, working with the federal government, working with the provincial government, and trying to build more social housing, stop all the development right now, bring more social housing, build more social housing, meet the community people, speak with us, or we have to look for another council, for another mayor. Thank you.
You have some questions. Councillor Carr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question, and I missed it, because you went over it quite quickly. You said something about the BD group and $60,000 donation. I did-
That's what I understand, that the BD donated to Vision in the 2014 campaign, more than $60,000.
Okay, that's, I didn't quite catch what that was, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those are your questions. Our next speaker then is David Choi. David Choi. Tomby and Angela. Tomby and Angela, no. Vivian Yu. Kathy Shimizu.
I'm not actually Kathy Shimizu. I have her words with me. She's just actually texted me to ask if she could come back later to speak herself.
She can come back at the end, yes.
She can, okay.
Next speaker then is Larry Benj. Larry Benj, no. Oh, there you are. Good evening.
Thank you. Mayor, council, my name's Larry Benj. I have a degree in architecture, and I'm an affiliate with the Masters of Urban Design Program out of UBC, as well as being co-chair of the Coalition of Vancouver Neighborhoods. I'm here today in support of one of our members, the Chinatown Action Group, as well as others in the Chinatown community who are opposed to this rezoning. The Coalition does not support this rezoning for the reasons given by many of the preceding speakers. I'll just be brief. The proposed units will not be affordable to those in the community who are being displaced, who are most in need. It will, by its nature, promote additional loss of affordability in the community, displacing vulnerable citizens, and the affordable, culturally-appropriate businesses they depend on. Lack of any architectural detail, texture, or character that would tie it to its location as a part of Chinatown, this building could be pretty much anywhere in the world. It shows a total lack of respect for its site adjacent to culturally important and significant elements such as the Dr. Sunyat Sen Gardens and the War Memorial. Its height is inappropriate to the site and to the Chinatown District, and is another unfortunate example of an attempt to open up the area to tower development, not in keeping with the character of Chinatown. Its massing is also much larger and denser than average buildings in the area. Those are reasons. But I'd also like to kind of make some general comments on the process, because that's where my interest lies. I'm just curious why elder Chinese, or anyone who comes to this hearing, who needs a translator, is not given additional time, at least the eight minutes that an organization has, because their time is essentially halved. They have half the time of anybody else who speaks, because the other half has taken up with translation. I think that's, you know, that's something that absolutely has to be addressed at these kinds of hearings. I think it's totally disrespectful to people who need translation services. I also want to clarify that when people are opposed to a project such as this, which includes social housing, it doesn't mean that those people are against social housing. It means they're against the type of development that is being proposed. If people are opposed to a rezoning that is, in essence, a redevelopment, that doesn't mean that people are against redevelopment, or intensification of activity, additional units in the area, things like that. I think that gets lost sometimes. Also, if the consultation process the city uses in terms of these kinds of projects were successful, you certainly wouldn't have over 200 speakers coming to a public hearing to speak either in opposition or in favor of them. You would probably have a much more smooth-running and quicker process. Another, well, I'd just like to, I've got about a minute. I want to close with a quote from Andy Yan, who is one of our more astute urbanists in the area, who just wrote an article about this development, and he closed with this statement. "The city of Vancouver needs a bespoke urbanism that is tailored to what makes Vancouver neighborhoods livable, sustainable, and inclusive in terms of diversity scale and neighborliness. Great cities and their neighborhoods are created slowly over time. This type of city building is not fast and easy, but moderate and deliberate. Rezoning with little regard to social, cultural, and economic context and consequences should be rejected. Vancouver needs a new type of city building that celebrates and supports the diverse histories and communities that made this city great. This should begin in Chinatown." Thank you.
You have some questions? First, we have councillor Ball.
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you, as chair. I have a point of personal privilege. Is it possible for us to contemplate in respect for the people that are here tonight, that we have a 10-minute break now, because we are going to be here for five hours? And sitting for five hours does not actually give the kind of respect that we should be giving to them.
Thank you, councillor Ball. Let me finish questions, and then I'll test the body to see whether or not a break is in order. Okay?
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Councillor Carr, questions?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Benj, I'm interested in your comments about the process. If there was a good process, we wouldn't have so many people here speaking so strongly on both sides. What kind of process of public consultation do you think could be designed around a specific project? This is not a big plan, it's a project coming to us in public hearings. So there's an applicant involved, and you know the process, me, and you're an architect. So what would the process look like for an individual application for rezoning?
Well, the process, as I see it, would, and this is something our group has tried to work towards for quite some time now, is a process which involves neighborhoods' voices in the planning process from the definition, the problem definition stage, right through the development of projects. It doesn't matter whether it's this project in Chinatown or a project in Champlain Heights. The problem right now is that the city doesn't have an effective engagement process- The problem right now is that the city doesn't have an effective engagement process where it consults with neighborhoods. We've been trying to get together with Gil Kelly and discuss this for quite some time. We will continue to try to do it. It's a process that's used in other cities. Portland, Seattle just had it for quite some time and is now altering it. But it is one where you have, you have planners who are assigned to neighborhoods, not councillor liaisons. That's a mistake because that's political favoritism, and it's, when you assign political people to planning issues, those people can change over time, whereas if you have a bureaucrat, if you have a planner that can't, you can establish a relationship with, and you can discuss things with, and those planners are your liaison people to City Hall, it's much more effective. And we have nothing like that right now.
Okay.
Even the councillor liaisons, I mean, I'm also with West Kitz residence association. I don't know how long, I think the councillor liaison program has been in effect for at least, what, a year or so?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I, we've had no meetings with any councillors or anything. I'm assuming, I guess, that it's our responsibility to call one. I don't know.
Could you just, for, I don't have too much time, but a moment, talk about the situation, if you know it. You said that Portland has a situation or a process whereby a project from the project definition stage actually...
Councillor Meggs.
I worry that some of these questions are heading into territories about Portland or overall zoning processes or the UN Heritage rules, and I would appreciate more of a focus on the specific issues in front of us tonight.
You are correct, councillor Meggs. Councillor Carr, could you focus on the development proposal that's before us?
I think that I'm trying to get at why we have hundreds of people here who are very upset about a project or supportive, but trying to understand what it is about the process leading up to our decision-making in this public hearing.
So specific to issues that you might have had with the process that we've conducted in the city of Vancouver.
Well, okay.
Can I, can I jump in?
Councillor Carr?
You know, if you don't, I think I'm, I think I'm being asked here to not talk about what alternatives might be. So maybe you want to talk about what was wrong with the process from your point of view, if you believe the process, well, you said the process was wrong. So what was wrong about the process that led to such a controversial set of public hearings?
I would use the word flawed instead of wrong.
Okay.
And I think one of the reasons that it's flawed is typically the city brings out, they have open houses for these kinds of rezonings. The other comment I have is I'm not sure why this even made it to rezoning because the changes that were made through the four iterations of this project were so minimal as to be meaningless from once to the other, and I don't know how it ever reached the point of coming to a public hearing. However, the, the process is flawed because of, you don't have, you don't hold town hall meetings with, with the communities, you don't bring, you don't have a regular group of representatives from the community that are in consultation with the city. I don't, I don't believe this project, before it even started, you know, at the very beginning or as it started, had any contact with any neighborhood groups. I could be wrong, but that's, that's the assumption that I have because that's a typical part of the process. And you then have open houses where you're presented with fairly developed projects already underway, and it's not a case where the people in the community have a voice in helping to shape that project. I mean, you see the kinds of comments you're getting here. It's that this project does not fulfill the needs of the community as stated by the community because now you're getting it in whatever percentage of the people who are coming in here and objecting to this project. So it's obvious that the engagement process is not working properly here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Carr. Councillor Reimer.
I just had a quick comment since councillor Carr opened up this area of, this issue around neighborhood council liaisons, and you'd express some concerns that I'm really happy to meet with you around them. It's about a five-month-old program, and I, it sounds like your two liaisons haven't connected with you, but happy to do so if you've been trying and that hasn't happened yet.
Thank you, councillor. Did you go over?
I believe that councillor Deal and I are actually the liaisons to Kitzel, I know, and ourselves, and councillor Carr just attended a meeting in the community, actually, hosted by the residents, I understand.
I think that's Upper Kitz.
It may be Upper Kitz, but we responded to the request to meet immediately, so I just wanted to put that out there. I mean, you are welcome to speak to any ten, of the 10 councillors, but I know that we all attended a whole evening meeting, myself and councillor Deal and councillor Carr also.
Yeah, that was more of a general comment, that I don't think that councillor liaisons are the proper liaisons for communities.
Those are your questions. Thanks for coming this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next speaker is 1:30? Oh, sorry. I did have a question to test the room. Councillor Ball suggested a 10-minute break. I'll entertain that, and we'll recess for 10 minutes. Okay?
We are going to reconvene here in council in just a minute. If council could take their seats and the clerks could rejoin us, that would be great. Okay, we're going to get started here in just a sec. If I could get the rest of council back here in the chamber. We are going to reconvene. We do have quorum back here in the chamber. And we are on speaker number 130. That is Winnie Chung. Winnie Chung here? There she is, yeah. Followed by Graham Johnson. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. Well, it's a privilege to be able to address council on this very important issue, which affects not just the future of Chinatown, but the sense of trust between citizens and the public officials, as well as the way democracy works in this city. This is not a Chinatown issue, nor is it just an issue concerning Chinese people in the city. It's about how we function as a city. This is about what values, what guiding principles we embrace. I speak as a concerned and engaged citizen, with no personal agenda and no vested interest regarding the development proposal at 105 Kiefer Street in Vancouver, at this very critical juncture in the history of Vancouver's Chinatown. First, a few words about my background and what Chinatown means to me. Before I came to Chinatown, before I came to Canada, I had assumed Canada was just a white country, because that was the image we got on the other side of the Pacific. Even though I was married to a Chinese Canadian, I had no clue about the significant presence and contributions of the Chinese pioneers in B.C. and in Canada. Being educated in the British colony of Hong Kong and with two degrees in English literature from the Commonwealth, I thought I was pretty well-educated, only to find that I was so ashamed and shocked to see, to realize how deeply ignorant I was and how much colonized I had been. It was through my visits to Chinatown in my early days that I started to ask questions, and I wanted to understand why. It was not because I saw evidence of discrimination, because looking at Chinatown, I couldn't immediately get to know the story. But I had a lot of questions, and I started talking to people. And I met people, because I volunteer in Chinatown, teaching Cantonese to both the non-Chinese as well as third-generation, fourth-generation Chinese who have lost the heritage language. So I taught in the Chinese library at one end of Panda, and then I taught English at the other end of Panda in the Chinese Cultural Centre. So that was, to me, a very important hub where I can meet different kinds of people. And for myself, to start becoming a Canadian, first by learning about Canada is full history, not just the history that we've got in the history books that our children got in the school, which is biased and incomplete. So Chinatown has made me a better person. It has also made me a better citizen. And I like to say how I learned about becoming a better person. My husband's family, they never talk about their history here, like a typical Chinese-Canadian family, which started coming with ancestors coming here in the early days. Great-grandfather came, and he paid the head tax. So did his son-grandfather. But I never met them, and it was through talking to Larry Wong in Chinatown that I got this image of all these old people, a row of old people, old men, sitting in a row, watching people passing by, especially getting interested when there are little kids passing by. And Larry Wong explained to me why these old bachelors, so-called bachelors, were so interested and happy to see young children. Right? Slowly, I learned about our own grandfather and great-grandfather. I never met grandfather. Still today, I felt so bad that I didn't have the chance to tell him some of the things that we have been able to do since his demise. When I realized that he came as a teenager to succeed his father, so that his father, being one of the luckier ones, could return to Kaiping in South China to retire. So in his teenage years, he started working here, and he went back three times, got married, had three children. But he was separated from his family, and you know the story.
So you're almost out of time. If you could wrap up, thanks.
Okay, I will stop that family story. But I slowly began to realize how important it is that we find out about the missing chapters of our history. And it's not just for the Chinese. As a people, we need to know that. And Chinatown is a living museum today. And this is a critical point in our history. We do not want to lose more opportunities to preserve the history and whatever stories that can be easily told, not to shame people who caused the pain, but for all of us to be better people.
Okay, thank you very much.
In this very important triangle, it's not about how high the building is. It's about, this is not a place for another condo. We need more spaces.
Thank you very much.
For amenities and for us to learn about ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Chung, thank you for being here. And our next speaker is Graham Johnson. Speaker 131.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Graham Johnson. I am a professor emeritus of sociology at UBC. I came to Vancouver almost 50 years ago at a rather critical moment that Henry Yu spoke of quite importantly, just after the connector, where the people of Strathcona and Chinatown, who were then predominantly Chinese and where, in fact, at that point in time, 90% of the population of Chinese origin in the Lowland had lived. That defined a city, as Henry Yu has said. I came to UBC, or I came to Vancouver because I came to UBC. My area of interest was Hong Kong. I was an immigrant from Hong Kong. I worked extensively in South China, in the homeland regions where the original Chinese population came from. That Chinatown became a very important focus of my research, as first of all, I wrote a book on the history of the Chinese pop communities in Canada. I was fortunate enough to serve on CHAPAC in the late 1970s, when Michael Harcourt was mayor. We were involved in an effort to revitalize Chinatown. CHAPAC at that time, I think, was largely responsible for painting Chinatown red, for putting brass markers on the sidewalks, for bringing in fancy lampposts with dragons on them, and so on and so forth. We were very well aware of the importance of Chinatown as a cultural focus for Vancouver. Things have changed. Things have changed dramatically. As Elder Grant said on Tuesday, Chinatown is not what it once was. I do not have a think that this proposal to readjust the zoning regulations with respect to this project is going to work. One swallow does not a summer make. One building does not a Chinatown reform. I have been in the homeland. The first time I went to Toyson, where most of the Chinese population came from, I went like a mad dog and an Englishman out into the heat of the midday sun and walked around Toyson and Toysing and the capital city. And I suddenly think, I'd been here before. Where had I been got this feeling from? I got this feeling because I suddenly realized Chinatown. That Chinatown reflects a homeland in a very, very important way. And I would like to point out that over the past 30 years, China has changed dramatically. China has urbanized dramatically. If you want to talk about densification, go to China. Big, big high-rises, a lot of pizzazz, but also a lot of heritage preservation. There are walking streets in virtually every county town, or what was a county town in the Pearl River Delta region of Guangdong, from which most Chinese Canadians came from. The only place, of course, there isn't heritage preservation is Hong Kong, alas. It can be done. You can develop, and yet you don't have to destroy the heritage. And let me also point out that we've spoken a lot about the view in front of this proposed building, what it fronts, the memorials, the cultural centre, the garden. We haven't talked very much about what the view is from the back. A critical part of Chinatown is just behind this building. Just behind this building, there is the CBA, the Chinese Benevolent Association, and next to it is the Freemasons. I have stood, looking across that road with tours of Chinatown, and I know that what is going to happen if that building goes ahead at the heights that is being proposed, it will destroy. It will destroy the sense, the heritage sense of what we have. Already, we've made mistakes farther up the road. Let us not do it again. This would be the thin end of the wedge. We can preserve, we can develop, we can also destroy. If we do not allow this rezoning to go forward, we will have drawn a very important line in the sand. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, for being here. And our next speaker is Elizabeth Murphy. Is Elizabeth Murphy here? Not here. Andrea Lum, speaker 133. Andrea Lum. Not here. Speaker 134, Victoria Susan Chow. Victoria Susan Chow is not here. Speaker 135, David Pancham. David Pancham is not here. Speaker 136, Thomas Robson is here, followed by Catherine McCauley. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor and council, thank you very much for your time. My name is Thomas Robson. I'm here today to voice my opposition to the rezoning application at 105 Kiefer. I'm a longtime resident of Vancouver's Chinatown. This is my home, where I work, where I vote. I'm engaged at multiple levels in this community. I'm a sitting director for both the second-largest housing cooperative in the province, which is situated in Chinatown, as well as for the Provincial Co-op Housing Federation. While I am not here today to represent either of these excellent organizations, my years of experience sitting on both of these boards informs my reasoning. The application for rezoning at 105 Kiefer should not be approved for the following reasons. This rezoning application concerns our tiny and much diminished historic Chinatown. Any projects in this area should be consistent with the current zoning, as others have said. We can simply just say no. The net impacts of a development like this run counter to the best practices for management of a historic neighborhood, and they establish precedent for more of the same. The historic Chinatown, now I've got that backwards. The Chinatown Historic Area Planning Committee has not supported this proposal. Multiple projects like this in the immediate area have already resulted in rapid, significant increases to taxes and to market housing rates. These negative impacts have already harmed desirable key cultural and historic small businesses, as well as the residents in this neighborhood at all income levels. The token amount of seniors' housing this project provides is an insult to the community when the space could so much more adequately provide for the need identified years ago. the space could so much more adequately provide for the need identified years ago. We were looking for something in the area of 3,000 units. I believe there was a UBC study that spoke directly to that. The 1,000 square feet seniors' recreational space is also hard to swallow. A significant community facility sits underfunded and underused across the street from the project site. The Chinese Cultural Center could receive additional funding to help guarantee its further use, or a legacy business could be placed in the current development proposal, or additional housing could be incorporated for seniors, instead of creating competition for the Cultural Center, which is an asset that needs support. As the Northeast False Creek Plan begins to come into focus, it is apparent that the proposed park, Carroll Street, and the playing fields will become the southern boundary of Chinatown. The Chinese Veterans Memorial Plaza becomes a significant feature, one of several gateways to Chinatown that include the Millennium Gate on Pender, the Dr. Sun Yat-sen Classical Chinese Garden on Carroll, and of course, the Veterans Memorial Plaza on Kiefer. This memorial is intended to honor both tremendous sacrifice and contribution. The Memorial Plaza deserves respect, emphasis, as well as integration into a wider plan for all of Chinatown. The area around the Veterans Memorial Plaza should reflect the history and architectural heritage of Vancouver's Chinatown. The current proposal for 105 Kiefer does not do so. Chinatown is a street-level experience, not a distant architectural profile on our horizon. We need the narrow shophouse-style commercial spaces consistent with and complementary to the rest of this historic neighborhood. Spaces built specifically to foster the sorts of businesses that make this neighborhood interesting, affordable, and especially an asset for tourism. I personally oppose this rezoning application.
Thank you very much for being here and sharing your thoughts. No questions for you.
You know, it appears to me I have 45 seconds left, and I'm just going to toss this on top. We've all acknowledged there's a housing crisis going on, and we still seem to be driving the bus in a business-as-usual fashion. So while we discuss the fact that there is private ownership of this land and a host of other issues, I think it's time that we seriously consider some drastic other approaches. We're going to be faced with that necessity one day eventually. Regardless, it's perhaps time to begin that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Speaker 137, Catherine McCauley, followed by Byron Peters.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you today in opposition to this rezoning application. In my view, the difference between a failed city and a fantastic city is leadership. In the past, I've bemoaned the absence of the traditional ward system of municipal government here in Vancouver, because it always feels like no one is ever responsible for anything. Well, today, I'm actually happy about the political structure, because this decision is on all of you. The principles at hand on this matter before you will have a tremendous impact on the future of our city and how we manage the natural tension between history and progress. It seems unbelievable to me that in the year when we celebrate 150 years of this great country, that the city of Vancouver could contemplate anything other than wrapping its collective arms around Chinatown. In a year when we're particularly mindful about our history, it should be noted that without a national railroad, the Canada that we know today would not exist. The railroad that connects our province to the rest of the country was largely built by the Chinese. These Chinese workers were essential to the evolution of our country, and afterward, they settled here in Chinatown. They thrived here. Chinatown became part of the fabric of this nation and part of the soul of our city. This is why it seems crazy to me that we're here discussing protecting it instead of how to celebrate it. I didn't grow up in Vancouver. I'm not Chinese. I didn't head down to Chinatown as a kid to celebrate birthdays and special events with my family at the Ho-Ho, although I've heard a lot about it. But I do have the experience of someone who's lived in other cities, faced with these questions of city building and leadership. And what I've learned in these issues is that these things should matter to all of us. If you look across Canada, you can see how other cities have chosen to preserve and protect what makes them distinctive. Kensington Market and the Distillery District in Toronto, Old Montreal, the lighthouses in Nova Scotia. Look beyond Canada to see examples of protection in San Francisco with the iconic Painted Ladies, or Jamaica Plain in Boston. Or consider the many examples found all over Europe, in Paris, Vienna, and Prague. Difficult decisions made by these municipal leaders have done what I expect from my council. They've exercised leadership to do what's right. Allowing a 12-story condo at 105 Kiefer is the thin edge of the wedge toward choking out Chinatown by surrounding it with a wall of condos. Is that the legacy you want to leave? Is that a decision that's consistent with making Vancouver the envy of the world? I ask you to consider, what could happen if you reject the proposal to build this condo at 105 Kiefer? You might just find that history will be respected and preserved. A community will be revitalized. Seniors will be cared for. Chinese culture will thrive, and everyone will share in this wonderful place we call Chinatown. And that will be your legacy.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate your comments. And next up, 138, Byron Peters. And followed by Melissa Fung, 139.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like many others today, I would like to acknowledge that we are having this public hearing on the unceded territories of the Coast Salish people, the Musqueam, the Squamish, and the Slewhatuth. This is extremely important, especially as we discuss the use of land, and in this case, the repurposing of land. I speak to you today from a place of urgency. First, a bit about me. I'm from the Lower Mainland. My father's family is from the Prairies. My mother's family is from Chinatown, with roots there since the late 19th century. I speak to the latter because it is relevant here. My grandfather, with the family named Louis, grew up on Georgia Street, and my grandmother, with the family named Yip, on Kiefer. My great-grandfather, Hockyatt Louis, came to Vancouver in 1896. In Chinatown today, I talk to residents who are having to leave or to close their shops very often, but I am convinced this does not have to be the case. I am opposed to the project proposal and the rezoning. Many have pointed out that what happens at 105 Kiefer stands as a symbol for the city's respect and approach to Chinatown's future. So what's happening there? For example, within the last six years, the number of greengrocers has gone down 50%. Herbal stores, 33%, and fishmongers, 60%. But as of February 2017, 362 new units were proposed for Chinatown, but no low-income housing was proposed, and four units were lost. For 2016, 398 unaffordable units opened, and only 11 opened at welfare and pension rate. That's a ratio of 36 to 1. I'm a mathematics teacher, and that's a pretty big ratio. There are enough market condos in Chinatown already going ahead. This proposal is not needed, it is not practical, and more than that, it is dangerous. This proposal and many of the project modifications I have been hearing are disappointing. They surprise me in their limited scope. But the stakes so high with this project, its location at the heart of Chinatown, the social needs of the neighborhood, yet the proposal comes back to this chamber over years now, and discussions, for example, of reducing the tower by a single floor, slight alterations to building massing. Such items at this point are like focusing on a single detail without seeing the larger problem, thus losing track of the solution. A horse wearing blinders focuses ahead as it takes the course chosen by its rider. Zooming out, we are discovering in this political moment in history that this approach of head-down, focus on small alterations, isn't enough, and in fact, that too is dangerous. The banality of evil is a very real thing. You start to say phrases that sound like, "It is the way it is. Change is inevitable. I'm just doing my job." But I think your job here does not have to be facilitating the displacement, disenfranchisement, and replacement of low-income people. I believe that revitalization should be defined as ensuring Chinatown is affordable for its current residents, thus facilitating life. The idea of B.C. Housing spending 7.3 million to a developer who is going to build the building anyways, pay for the land already paid for, take care of the building's infrastructures, to pay that amount of money for 25 token units that won't be affordable to low-income residents anyways, clearly economically, too, this is a raw deal. Right in front of us, there is an opportunity to begin fresh. Make this a project that does justice to the history of Chinatown and serves the people who live there. But for now, the first step would simply be to reject this proposal and rezoning. Imagine in the future, as Chinatown becomes wealthier, it is not because new residents of a different class have replaced the people who have lived there for generations, but rather, at this central location, if you find a way to provide actually affordable housing for local people and support the economy and culture that already exists in Chinatown, you will find that Chinatown will survive and grow from its history and present, not over top of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Our next speaker is 139, Melissa Fung. Okay, we'll keep moving on. We've got Amanda Wan, 141. And she is up next, followed by Daniel Segay. Good evening. Welcome.
Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. Dear Mayor and City Council, thank you for providing this time to speak. My name's Amanda Wan. And I'm here to oppose the 105 Kiefer project. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge that this hearing is happening on unceded Musqueam, Slewhatuth, and Squamish territory. Efforts against displacement in Chinatown are inseparable from this history and current reality. And I'm speaking for myself as a concerned citizen, but also out of care for the people and communities that face the injustice of displacement in Chinatown and elsewhere. Currently, Chinatown is a site where issues such as displacement, gentrification, and racism intertwine. BD has proposed a project that fails to address the needs of the community. In fact, the project is completely misaligned with the community's needs and visions for itself. But currently, Chinatown is also a site of possibility for efforts against placing profit over people and for the needs of people who will be most impacted by this project. This means that the approval of this project would set a powerful precedent for mass rezoning in Chinatown and gentrification in low-income neighborhoods, such as Chinatown and the surrounding downtown east side. But while the people who live and work in Chinatown may be vulnerable to rezoning, they are not merely a part of a dying history. As opposition, they are living and active, and they have expressly made their needs known time and time again. To be clear, I do not support the proposed rezoning, because 25 units of social housing is not enough for the thousands of seniors and low-income residents who need housing at welfare rates, not market rates. Projects like 105 Kiefer take up space that could be used for social housing or public community use. Any money that might come out of this project would not truly benefit the community, as it would directly contribute to the immediate displacement of the people and the communities already living there. 105 Kiefer also doesn't fit into Chinatown. Physically, the building is too tall for surrounding heritage sites. Any nods towards Chinese heritage are surface-level and tokenistic. Culturally, it does not align with Chinatown's intangible heritage. Participants of an August 2015 study of Heritage B.C. on behalf of the B.C. Ministry of International Trade identified Chinese seniors, culturally appropriate small businesses and services, and the presence of Chinese-Canadian heritage that make Chinatown meaningful and unique. If BD cannot honor this history of Chinatown, then I struggle to see how 105 Kiefer will generally honor the future of Chinatown. Additionally, supporters of 105 Kiefer talk about crime as a reason to develop. But crime isn't the problem. The problem is displacement and gentrification, and these lead to conditions of poverty and vulnerability that we see now. It's the criminalization of poor people, of elderly people, people who are drug users, and racialized people, making them seem less human and therefore less capable of creating their own vision for how they want their communities to look. And if crime was the problem, then developers would prioritize things like safe injection sites and housing that works for the people, rather than imposing their anti-visions of what social housing and revitalization mean. And this shows how short-sighted the developers are. They fail to see the long-term impacts of displacement, and they don't seem to care what happens to those who are pushed out of their own neighborhoods because they can't afford market housing. The 105 Kiefer rezoning application is not suitable for Chinatown. I urge city staff to recognize and address concerns that have been brought here and elsewhere and reject the 105 Kiefer project. I urge Mayor and City Council, who is 1, I urge Mayor and City Council, sorry, I urge Mayor and City Council to ask, who is 105 Kiefer really for? How can we nurture the people and the neighborhood so that we can all grow in healthy, dignified, healthy, equitable, and meaningful ways? This is what the future could look like, and I don't want the city to just do better. I want it to imagine better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Thank you very much. Next, next up is 142, Daniel Segay. Daniel Segay here? Not here. 143, Rick Lamb. Rick Lamb here. Don't see Rick Lamb. Isabel Krupp, Speaker 144, followed by Rita Wong. Good evening.
Hi, I'm here to oppose the rezoning. I grew up in social housing, first just five minutes from Chinatown, later off Commercial Drive. 100% social housing, back before that was something we had to fight for. So I don't know what it will be like for the low-income residents of this proposed development to live under the weight of 10 floors of market housing, 10 floors of rich people, but I can imagine. At this hearing, we've heard supporters of the rezoning deploy anti-poor rhetoric in defense of the BD development, references to cleaning up the streets, crime, drug use, code words like revitalization. So I worry that the seniors living in the social housing units at 105 Kiefer will face stigma, poor bashing, and racism from their upstairs neighbors, that they'll feel unwelcome in their own home if this project goes forward, just as others have described feeling increasingly unwelcome in their own neighborhoods as gentrifying businesses and luxury condos move in. We need 100% social housing at this site. I can understand the kind of desperation that leads someone to say, 25 units is better than nothing. And I can understand the failure of imagination that keeps people from demanding more, from demanding better, after being told for decades that there is no alternative to our current political landscape. Hearing from city councillors today that there's no third option, that luxury condos will go up at 105 Kiefer no matter what, but we have to reject that line of thinking. Because the reality is, we're in a crisis. Here in Vancouver, the housing crisis, across Canada and the States, a crisis of racism and xenophobia, white supremacy. Multi-million-dollar corporations like the BD Group want us to believe that the market offers solutions to this crisis. But we know that profit is the lifeblood of corporations. If a corporation doesn't make a profit, it doesn't exist. So for communities that are unprofitable, communities that are marked as disposable at the intersections of class and race, the market offers no solutions. How can it? When we know that developers like BD benefit from the same rising real estate prices that are destroying these communities, there can be no compromise here. But there are alternatives. There are options. Stop playing nice with developers and start standing up for the city's most vulnerable residents. The first step is saying no to this rezoning application. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. 146 is Rita Wong. Is Rita Wong here? Not seeing Rita Wong. Is Elizabeth Chong here? Elizabeth Chong is coming. And she's followed by Wendy Peterson, Speaker 148.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Can everyone hear me?
I'm sorry. My name is Elizabeth Chong. This is my first time not only attending but speaking at a public hearing, so sorry if I'm really nervous. I am opposed to this rezoning application at 105 Kiefer Street. I am a born and raised Vancouverite. I attended General Brock Elementary School and St. Francis Xavier Elementary School, which used to be in Strathcona, but relocated to Great Northern Way. I graduated from UBC's Soder School of Business with a concentration in marketing and real estate, and a minor in Asian Canadian and Asian Migration Studies, semi-recently. Thanks to the determination of my parents and my grandmother, from the age of four, my siblings and I attended Chinese school near Strathcona after school, five days a week. Because of the schooling, I'm lucky enough to be fluent in Cantonese and Mandarin and can communicate to Chinese elders in the language that they feel most comfortable in. Now, I work in Chinatown, and on my daily life to and from work, I can easily wave to five or six merchants and share friendly greetings in Chinese with them. In Chinatown, people are very approachable. There's a distinct difference between the pedestrian activity and ambiance in Chinatown compared to other areas in Vancouver. A lot of people in Chinatown have lived and worked there for a long time, some for decades or even generations. Restaurant staff are on a first-name basis with most of their customers, or if they aren't, they will playfully call you Lang Zai or Lang Loi when they recognize you, which means handsome man, handsome boy, or handsome girl. The seniors are the heart of this neighborhood, but there are also the countless youth who volunteer here with the seniors that make their often isolated day-to-day life much more livable. Together, they form what I think is the soul of Chinatown, which is familial love. I volunteer at the Brock Farni Pavilion, which is a long-term care facility under Providence Healthcare. Most of the residents at that facility are not mobile and see very few visitors. I see a stark, heart-wrenching contrast between the way that they exist and the way that the seniors in Chinatown live. I strongly believe that the seniors in Chinatown, who regularly give strangers with the brightest smiles, enjoy longer and healthier lives because they have a strong community looking after each other despite differences in age or background. Now, this community is at risk of being erased. Throughout this rezoning process, I've heard a recurring comment, "The developer isn't making enough money." So what is enough money? What might be true is that the developer isn't making as much of a profit as they had expected when they decided to put a bid to purchase the price, to purchase the site. One way that developers determine whether or not they will purchase a site is by calculating a land residual value, and to determine that value, they calculate the potential profitability of the land minus the other expenses that are associated with putting it into productive use. So it's a rough estimate of what they will make and pocket. So I have a feeling that the potential to rezone the site was calculated into the profitability of the land, and the developer expected much higher returns than what they would make without the upzoning. The land residual value, depending on the type of project you intend to build, is key to determining the highest and best use for a site, which sounds comprehensive, but is really just based on what is physically possible, appropriately supported, and financially feasible. So market appropriateness and neighborhood context is often overridden. In a student project report that I once submitted, we recommended that the developer apply for rezoning in a highly sensitive neighborhood. We wrote in our report, "The developer must show the community that this proposal meets an underserved need in the area." Social housing is indeed an underserved need, but the 25 affordable units that are ambiguously promised are not substantial enough. After attending the entire public hearings on Tuesday and Thursday, 105 Kiefer has really taken over my mind. Chinatown is a national historic site and a global tourist attraction. I had dinner in Steveson with my friends on Tuesday night, another tourist attraction in Greater Vancouver. The little shops with unique offerings reminded me of Chinatown, but it doesn't have the cultural environment that Chinatown can boast. So could you imagine allowing two 15-story-tall condos in Steveson in the name of economic revitalization? And then, after you realize the negative impacts and unintended consequence, you allow more just because the first mistake was already made? There must be a more creative way to achieve the intended goal of community development. Why are we even considering this application in Chinatown, one of the top 10 endangered places in Canada? I urge Mayor and Council to reject this rezoning application. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You have a question? From Councilor Carr, question?
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask you a question that you may or may not be able to answer. Because of your background specialty from UBC, I'm wondering if you might have an interpretation for me. And it is from the report. I've asked staff this question, and the question revolves around why we are not asking for any community amenity contributions from the developer. And the community amenity contributions are based on what would be an increase in land value expected to come from rezoning. This is the statement in the report. "After factoring in the provision of below-market commercial space," and I can only assume that that means the space for the seniors, that's the only below-market space that we've been talking about, "there was no increase in the land value generated by the rezoning from the market component." And they told me the market component is both the market condos and the commercial space. No increase in the land value, therefore no CAC is offered. So in your experience, could the below-market, like they're saying maybe 50% below-market for one out of the eight units of commercial space, could that be worth more money than all of the market extra money from the three extra floors of condos?
I'm not a professional, but in one of my projects at school, we asked for an additional 15 feet in height, and then when you factor in the cost of the rezoning process, and we ended up, our conclusion was that there was a tremendous upside, and the costs were, when we calculate them, it's still, there still is a tremendous upside. So even with 15 feet in a neighborhood that is not nearly as hot as Vancouver, that's the case, so that's my comparison.
Oh, that's very interesting. I really appreciate you offering that example.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks very much for being here. Our next speaker is 148 Wendy Peterson. Not here. Wendy Peterson, not here. Okay. We'll go, 149 is Sam Dharma-Pala. What's written on here? Dharma-Pala, Sam Dharma-Pala. 149. 150 is Jack Gates. Jack Gates, not here. 151 Darlene Bertholet. Darlene Bertholet, not here.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if you noticed that one of the speakers, just a few speakers back, Melissa Fong has come into the room? Or she was here? Will they let somebody else do it?
Pardon me? Okay. Well, typically what we do is, if you missed your spot, then you can certainly speak at the end. We've been, had a little more grace given, people are upstairs, downstairs, and moving around a lot. Why don't I get to the bottom of this page, and we'll see if anyone's here, and if Council's okay, you can sub in. Jeffrey Wong, 152, is here. Okay. And Edmund Ma is next. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jeffrey Wong, and I'm one of the directors at the Wong's Benevolent Association. Christopher Forrest Wong has, my fellow member, has spoken in depth last night, so I'm going to keep my speech nice and short. The Wong's Benevolent Association owns two historic buildings on Pender Street. One of our main buildings, the 123 East Pender, is situated on the 100 block of Pender, parallel to the site that is being proposed for rezoning. Our main building was built in 1920s. It is a four-story building that houses varieties of culturally important events, such as Chinese school, a banquet hall to house culturally ceremonies, an athletics club, and a music club. The proposed site will not only tower over the memorial, the War Memorial, the Cultural Center, and Dr. Senetson Garden, but only many historic buildings that reside on Pender Street. Not only does the proposed site loom over our buildings, but it raises concerns that it will cause, subsequently cause, creates a precedence for future developments in the area that ripples out within the community. I believe that there is too much unknown in the proposed community benefits that the developer has suggested. Is it eight or 25 low-income seniors' housing? Is it even affordable for low-income residents? Is seniors' cultural space even enough for the community? There are over 80 clans and associations throughout Chinatown, and most of them have seniors' cultural space, with the Wong's included. What about public space? What about youth space? There is rhetoric that youth is disinterested doing business in Chinatown and even coming down to Chinatown, but no, as we youth have organized events such as Mahjong Shosols, in which city councilors, veterans, and an overwhelming amount of youth are in attendance. This shows that we youth, including the Wong's youth, are interested in the neighborhood and are deeply concerned with what the proposed site will do to the community. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. And we'll just go to the bottom of this page here. Edmund Ma, number 153.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am a member of the Chinatown Historic Area Planning Committee. I am a member of the Community Economic Development Strategic Action Committee. I am also the director of the Ma's Society Athletic Department. My education background is in social economics and urban planning. I first learned Kung Fu in 1987, and now I teach in 2017. My name is Edmund Ma, and I oppose this rezoning, and I'll take one step further, is I say there needs to be a halt on all new development in Chinatown until our business community and our social service agencies can actually get a grasp of what the effects of this increase of 700 new units, which would translate to maybe 1,200 even more people. Right now, I don't think our business community can sustain that, and it'll rip and tear the urban fabric of our cultural, business community. I've only really begun to study the economics of Chinatown in 2013, when I was a research intern during the downtown east side local area planning process, along with two other SCARP students. We co-wrote a paper, and the paper was focused on researching the retail continuity of the downtown east side, as well as the economic viability of low-income-serving businesses. Our research paper studied mainly three subareas of the DEOD, Chinatown and Victory Square. During this time, we were able to interview and do research, and really look at it, take a step back, and really look at the struggles of the low-income businesses and the sense of belonging that they do provide to the low-income community and the marginalized peoples in the downtown east side. Our number-one recommendation from that paper, and I have two copies left back there, is our first recommendation was to replace the retail continuity policy with a strategy that would enhance and attract and retain low-income-serving businesses to the community. Our third proposal was to treat housing as an economic development issue. And finally, four years later, after that plan is put through, we finally have a Wes Regan and his team that finally has some support and funding to hire a staff to do research into the low-income intangible assets of the downtown east side community. Lastly, I feel that BD Living has a tremendous opportunity to leave their mark in our community. This development is just like any others. There are hundreds and hundreds of case studies that I and my colleagues have investigated and looked at, San Francisco, all the way through to Shanghai. One that actually stands out to me is the work of David Baker and Architects in San Francisco. They've been able to, with a limited budget, retain and develop about six-story-high, low-income subsidized housing units that have some element of social enterprise on the bottom to support the building. In addition to that, I have one example that I really go back to all the time, which was in Post Katrina in East New Orleans, where a Vietnamese community decided not to just wait for the government to help them. They took matters into their own hands, and they started to farm their own land and to produce food, and they developed a housing co-op, and it's extremely successful. And these are the type of innovative ideas within mixed social housing projects that I think that our community deserves.
You're just about out of time. You could wrap up in a sentence?
Yeah. Yeah, we have, BD has a tremendous opportunity here to develop, you know, a fantastic development. Just the design of it is, Vancouver deserves something, especially at this point and juncture in the entrance to Vancouver. It really deserves something that's bold and innovative, and not just something that's basic. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Ma. And Ainsley Wong-Meldrum is our next speaker, followed by Donna Lee, and then I'll go to Melissa Fong and Rick Lamb. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Ainsley Wong-Meldrum. Before I continue any further, I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional territory of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Salawatutu people. My name is Ainsley Wong-Meldrum. I have a background in sustainable community development, and I currently work as a farmers' market manager. I'm here to oppose the rezoning application at 105 Kiefer. I am a fourth-generation Chinese-Canadian in Vancouver-Chinatown. I'm the descendant of pioneers. My great-grandfather was a railway worker who emigrated in 1885 from Guangdong Province, and many of my great-uncles were Chinese-Canadian veterans who volunteered during World War II. So the Chinatown Memorial captures important parts of our family's past. I'm also one of the younger members of the Wong's Benevolent Association, which has buildings at 29 East Pender and 123 East Pender. I've taken part in the recent historical discrimination forums with family members, and so I believe that we must look to the past as we consider the future of Chinatown. As you may know, the Wong's Benevolent Association has been a mutual self-help clan organization since 1912. Some of the functions of the association are providing assistance, jobs, education, and housing to vulnerable members of the community, including seniors. So we believe that it's important to take care of the most vulnerable and marginalized people throughout Chinatown, namely the Chinese seniors. It's important for us to remember that a lot of these older, monolingual seniors on a fixed income, they don't enjoy the same mobility that we take for granted and are not easily able to pick up sticks and move from one neighborhood to the next. I'm also cognizant of the fact that our elders did not choose to live in Chinatown. It was the unwanted area on the edge of a swamp at the edge of Falls Creek where they were forced to live. So if the area sees upward pressure and gentrification, I'm not really sure where the older residents are supposed to go. I urge Council to take time to carefully consider the future of Vancouver's Chinatown before it's too late. As other speakers have stated, the proposed development is not culturally sensitive to the needs of the community. It's overbuilding on historic district, and it will begin a new cycle of gentrification and rising land values. We've seen the unintended consequences of development in Chinatown in the last four years, resulting in the closing of important Chinese businesses and resulting in vacant storefronts. It's clear to me that the risk of continuing with this development outweighs the benefits. It's clear to me that the risk of continuing with this development outweighs the benefits to Chinatown. So in conclusion, I urge Council to proceed with extreme caution, and number one, stop rezoning at 105 Kiefer, and number two, follow the City of Vancouver Planning Department recommendation that rezonings of height greater than 90 feet and frontage is greater than 75 feet be banned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight. And our next speaker is 155, Donna Lee. Donna Lee here? Donna Lee is not here, so we'll go back to Speaker 139, Melissa Fong, and then Rick Lamb, 143. We don't typically vary in our practice here, but given the fact people are upstairs and downstairs and all over City Hall, we'll make an exception in this case. Welcome.
Thank you for indulging my lateness, and thank you for being here on a Friday night. Dear Mayor and Council, I am a planning researcher, instructor in geography and planning at the University of Toronto. I was raised in Vancouver and have served as a volunteer for many Chinatown advocacy groups for over a decade. I'm speaking in opposition of the 105 Kiefer proposal. The question we have today is whether or not the proposal deserves the rezoning. According to HAHR, rezonings are discretionary based on design excellence and benefit to community. Thus, the question is not whether they meet the minimum requirements or have the right to make an application, as they certainly do, but whether they fully achieve Chinatown policy and the intent of HAHR, which was to expedite the goals of the Chinatown Vision and Revitalization Plan. It's been repeated over these past three-plus days, but I will reiterate, the proposal offers no community amenity contributions. BC Housing is paying for the 25 units. It is a contribution by taxpayers and not the developer. As others have noted, according to the new definition of social housing, only a third of those units will truly be affordable. Just because it's called social housing doesn't mean that it's actually affordable to those who most need it. A thousand square feet at less-than-market rate for 10 years is not good enough. We need a permanent space in the city for seniors. Additionally, below-market rate can certainly still mean unaffordable to Chinese seniors' groups when market rate is increasing rapidly via gentrification. The so-called expansion to the plaza is actually a false comparison, since that car lane along Kiefer is barely used and, in fact, often occupied by community members playing mahjong. As some folks mentioned earlier, aspects like walkability in the application is not an added benefit. Seniors already enjoy that, and those are minimum requirements and expectations of the Chinatown built form. There just aren't enough community benefits for this application to deserve rezoning. Next, passing this proposal would continue to encourage gentrification in the area. Gentrification is the replacement of lower incomes by higher-income groups. It is not the same as revitalization. The intent of HAHR was to expedite the goal of residentializing Chinatown in order to support local businesses. But ever since HAHR, we've seen the rapid closure of mom-and-pop shops, the very local Chinese shops that make Chinatown what it is and approachable to low-income seniors. HAH1 was supposed to leverage development to help historic Pender, but instead it is destroying it by increasing rents and replacing local stores who can't afford rent with higher-end cafes and designer ice cream shops. The proposal would do more harm than good for Chinatown. The applicant wants you to judge them based on current requirements for this plot of land, and I want you to do the same and look at whether or not this application fits into the integrity of the goals of the Chinatown vision: to honor our vulnerable seniors, to honor youth, youth actually so dedicated to seniors that they circulate messages asking to help Chinatown shop owners and seniors move their belongings when they've been evicted. And I want you to know that, that like, these emails actually go a lot around in our groups, and asking for assistance to help pack their stuff up and find new spaces for them. And to respect and honor Chinatown's history and the future of reconciliation. If architectural excellence and community benefit were actually achieved, we wouldn't see such a mass opposition with our speakers. CHAFAC, our appointed local community body, wouldn't have rejected it, and our honored late architects, Joe Wei and Bing Tom, wouldn't have fought so vehemently against it, literally to their last days. I've got one minute left, and I'd like to take that minute to take a moment of silence for both Joe and Bing, who I was honored to have called mentors, if we could just take a moment.
Thank you very much for being here and for taking that time. Thank you for dedicating that time to honor Bing and Joe. Okay, next speaker is Rick Lamb. We're picking up the pieces here. Rick Lamb is next up.
Your worship, Member of City Council. Sorry, I was late, and actually, I wasn't upstairs or downstairs, I was just nowhere near City Hall, but anyways, thank you. My name is again Rick Lamb. I was Chair of the Chinatown Revitalization Committee for four years that ended in 2007, about 10 years ago now. I read through some of the materials in the website, and I got a little chuckle when I saw this petition. The first page, there was somebody on the first day, I think seven names down, yet the name is Langlois, in English is pretty girl, and of course, I would like to meet the Langlois, but there's no contact information here, so I couldn't do that. So, now seriously, with pretty, it's not the word that I would use for 105 Kiefer. It's just simply too tall with this proximity to H1, which is really just at the back of the alley, where H1 has the outright height restriction of 50 feet and the conditional restriction of 70 feet, and just at the back of the alley. There should be some sort of transition between H1 and the 20-foot building. As mentioned, you know, a few times before, especially this site where it's so close to Memorial Square, Chinese Cultural Centre in Sun Yat-Sen Gardens, just, to me, that doesn't make sense, and it's definitely not a marginal increase, as this petition mentions is, uses the word marginal increase from 90 feet to 120 feet. A 33% increase is not marginal, in my mind. In terms of the rezoning application, may I refer you to page 28 of the Chinatown Neighborhood Plan and Economic Revitalization Strategy. That was done in June 2012, and I'll read this to you. "These sites," referring to the sites that were dedicated to the rezoning, "are also expected to provide public benefits, and the rezoning policy specifies these benefits should meet the community's objective of innovative heritage restoration, cultural and affordable housing projects. For every supported higher building, a significantly higher standard of architectural and urban design excellence will be required." End of quote. Now, I'm not an expert on architect or that, but I would rely on a good late friend, Joe Wei. He, in a letter sent to Council in January, that was often quoted here, it was a Council call here, mentioned a few times, he said that revisions made by the applicant are simply not enough for this project to go through, and I concur with Joe on that. Now, I'll end with this. 2017 is Canada's 150th anniversary. This should be the year where we celebrate National Cultural and Heritage Treasure Slay of Vancouver-Chinatown. And I urge the Council to reject this proposal so that they keep Chinatown worth celebrating for in the future.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Lamb. Thanks for being here. And our next speaker is Speaker number 156, Anna Kay. I believe I saw Alex Lau here. Are you Anna Kay?
No, I'm related.
Okay, well.
She thinks she's 177.
Okay, yeah, there's two Anna Kay's.
Oh, okay.
But you.
So you want me to go ahead, or?
Well, you guys both signed up, but you both got registered as Anna Kay, so you should, you may as well go now, but Anna's at 177. Alex Lau, husband of Anna Kay.
All right, thank you. Sorry, a little out of breath. Things have proceeded a little faster than I expected, and I think I'm rushing to meet up with the future of Chinatown here. Mr. Mayor, councilors, appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts on the rezoning of 105 Kiefer. I'm against. I hope you'll indulge my longish notes, though, as this is an issue dear to me and my family. I believe our sentiments are representative of many Vancouverites. I speak to you as a member of a real estate family, which emigrated to Vancouver in 1974. My father, Jeffrey Lau, likes to tell the story that they toured a number of North American cities, such as New York, Seattle, and San Francisco. He said that Vancouver's Chinatown was truly vibrant at that time, beautiful, and with the highest retail rental rates in Canada. And it led to my parents' decision to move to Vancouver and set up a home here. And since then, they have contributed significant financial and personal resources to Chinatown and its community, from the Chinese Cultural Centre in Sun Yat-Sen Gardens, Alliance Club, Embus Vancouver-Chinatown, and Ngai Lam Music Society, and success. My father co-founded Channel M, the first over-the-air multicultural TV station in Canada, and located it in Chinatown. Growing up, I have very fond memories of coming to Chinatown for late-night tsuyas, snacks, and eating from the numerous street-side vendors. The scale was small, and the businesses were all extended families, of the small entrepreneurs who worked hard to build businesses, serve the communities, and send their kids to school. Our family had made it financially. We lived in West Vancouver, I attended private school, and Chinatown was the one place we could interact with these working-class immigrants and get to know them by name. Even to this day, my mother still comes to buy groceries twice a week in Chinatown, and my parents both get their hair cut there. My mom lives closer to Richmond, but only in Chinatown do the shopkeepers know her by her name, ask about her grandkids, greet her warmly, carry her groceries to her car. Only in Chinatown does she know about the lives and stories of the merchants who hold the space for the community. My kids, now 10 and 8, shop in the stores, learn Kung-Fu in the society building, and eat whatever snacks, we'll let them. Sadly, Chinatown's successful model of micro-enterprise with small-scale affordable food stores and small-scale affordable craft stores gradually eroded through years of underinvestment, as young people moved out and the homeless and drug users moved in. The last decade, with great support of the Mayor and Council, has seen a resurgence of local food and the celebration of international cultures throughout the city. There's no community more emblematic of this than Chinatown. An old community with roots like this is like an old growth forest. Once cut down, it's forever lost. Young people are coming back to Chinatown, sensing that something unique that they cherish may be lost forever. And we can see it here in these chambers. Most young people don't even vote, let alone show up in force in the way that they have. Joe Wei, Shirley Chan, and others in their youth fought to save Chinatown from freeway construction in the 1970s, and today I see young people showing up to fight for the future of their community. I've been spending some time these last few nights, listening to what people have had to say, and I've seen something very exciting. Everyone's fighting to build Chinatown. Everyone wants seniors' housing. Everyone wants vibrancy on the street. There are strong opinions on both sides, and I've been impressed by the councillor's thoughtful questions and comments. As a developer, I'm impressed by BD's desire to win over the community. Regretfully, their approach has increased the divisiveness in the community. You're never going to win everyone over, but when you have the elders who have committed their lives and careers to Chinatown, people like Joe Wei, Shirley Chan, Fred Ma, and Bing Tom, all highly respected elders, all against your project, I think you're doing something wrong. Ryan BD, I don't know you, and I'm sorry that you happened to buy into a sensitive site in Chinatown just as sentiment against high-rise development in Chinatown really picked up pace, and young people started to believe that the spirit of Chinatown did not have to be suffocated by inappropriate development. You've done a good job of tweaking, but I think this site deserves more, and the community is asking more from you. And I think that if you were to engage in a deeper process with the community, that you can be seen by many as a real friend of Chinatown. I am pro-development. Emerging Chinatown can be built on top of its rich history, and the small-scale entrepreneurs, immigrants from all nations, community builders, and cultural explorers can find a place within human-scale architecture. Rezoning 105 Kiefer to 12 stories and permitting a massive monolithic structure is a step backward, just as a community is starting to move forward. When those seeking contemplation in Sun Yat-Sen Gardens look down and, look up to see the residents looking down at them, when that one massive development overwhelms the rest of the small-scale developments on the block, I think that future generations would look back on the decision with regret. We may be tearing down the Georgia biarduck that once plowed through Chinatown, but the community will never have the right to tear down a building that divides it physically and spiritually. I urge you, Mr. Mayor and councilors, to show your positive vision for the future of Chinatown and help it fulfill its promise of a human-scale, small-entrepreneur-focused home for immigrants, tourists, and all Vancouverites.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. No questions for you. Okay, and our next speaker is Anita Lo, 157. Anita Lo, followed by Kwong Ming Chang.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Anita Lo, MK Lo. So I'm president of Happiness Community Association, and in 1988, I immigrated from Hong Kong, and I have been for volunteer almost 30 years, and served in the east side of Vancouver. So I know what happened and the history of the Chinatown and what the people need in the east side of Vancouver. So tonight, I want to say I supported establishment of the Chinatown Seniors Culture and Recreation Centre, which would operate in the building considered at 105 Kiefer Street in Chinatown. Currently, there are 20 organizations involved seniors in Chinatown that have no access to permanent, reliable place. Actually, I know many Chinese organizations like my Happiness Community Association, and they have done a great job for multicultural conversation in the community and also be concerned about the seniors to provide excellent service to them, such as annual free lunch party, performing, and gathering, so on. That means they have tried their best to support the government. That is a win-win situation, I think. So how come they don't have a right place to do the significant task for our country? And I think I strongly need, we need a convenient central location, space to continue to promote Chinese-Canadian art and the culture in Chinatown, specifically for seniors in the community. And we can now think of the more ideal location to promote Chinese culture activities in the heart of the Chinatown, at Kiefer and Columbia. We wanted to be able to promote Chinese traditional folk dance, opera, and other activities to the community, and we represent the interest of the people of Chinatown. I sincerely hope that project is supported so that our seniors' groups are no longer homeless and without the space. So. So I think now, I just want to say it's time for the government to do something for the project. Because we have done already, every try our best already. You know, compared to us, government is much more easier to do something for the community and for the Chinatown. They just needed to say yes, that's all. So I would like to say yes, and that's all for me tonight to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to speak. And our next speaker is 158, Kwong Ming Cheng. Welcome.
All right. You have a tip, sir.
He's here.
Oh, okay.
Dear Mayor and all, and City councillors. My personal opinion. I am in support of the 12-story-high building in Chinatown. Because of its 25 housing units for seniors. And also a centre for the seniors, for their activities. And so that there will be more Chinese coming to Chinatown. And to revitalise Chinatown. And I, I hope that you will have more Chinese characters for the building. And also hopefully is for the market condos, it will be cheaper for the Chinese. And it would help the businesses in Chinatown. I hope that you will all support the redevelopment in Chinatown. And also more about the culture, of the Chinese culture. And to build up a new Chinatown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are, thank you. And thank you for being here tonight. Mr. Cheng and Speaker number 159, David Chow, is next, followed by Zoe Luba.
Dear Mayor and City councillors. And I'm actually a yoga teacher. And I have been teaching the seniors to do the yoga exercises. And many of my students are seniors living near Chinatown. But we don't really have a place to teach yoga with them. For the project on 105 Kiefer Street, I think we should all support it. So there will be a designated place for activities for the seniors. And also there will be 25 housing units for seniors to live in. This project is very good, and I really am in support of it. And I hope the mayor and all the city councillors will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, you have question, question? Councillor De Genova?
Thank you very much for coming out and for waiting so long to speak.
Thank you.
Some speakers have said that 25 units of social housing is not enough for seniors in Chinatown in this project. I'm wondering if you feel that 25 units is enough or if you would like to see more units, just as other speakers have, have said.
I don't think it's enough.
And I hope that there will be more affordable units to be built.
Do you see this project being able to build more affordable, or I suppose, do you, do you see this project being able to provide that? Or do you think we have to look at providing social housing units for seniors in many buildings?
Yeah, I think that also can be provided other than in the 105 Kiefer Street site.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, doze. And Mr. Chow and our next speaker, 161, Zoe Luba, followed by Vanessa, Vanessa Buie.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, thank you all for listening to me tonight. My name is Zoe. And before beginning, I, I want to acknowledge that I'm speaking on unceded Coast Salish territories, land that rightfully belongs to the Squamish, Musquiam, and Slalitutu peoples. This luxury private, private property development that myself and so many others are fighting against today is taking, is part of a long history of gentrification projects on stolen land, which in the process destroy vibrant, low-income communities. And so, as it's probably pretty clear, I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed rezoning application for the BD project of 105 Kiefer Street. This project is nowhere near enough to provide support to seniors and low-income residents of the Chinatown community. First of all, I do want to take a minute to acknowledge the years of work and organizing that groups such as the Chinatown Concern Group and the Carney Community Action Project have put into fighting, to fighting for this community and fighting with this community. I really admire and support these activists. And also, I just want to give a shout-out to the people back there and people who've been speaking at all these public hearings for the past, this is the third night in opposition to, to this, to this project. Secondly, I do want to recognize and draw attention to the connections between gentrification, this project, and racism. And I want to, as a white person, I want to just address the white people on council. I want them to just think about their role in this as white people with a lot of power to potentially pass or not pass this rezoning application. It's a rhetorical challenge for you, for you tonight. Thirdly, I am, I do sort of come into this as an outsider. I'm not an expert on this development project. I'm not a city planner. I don't have the stats and numbers exactly. But what I do have is an anger and sadness is at what I see happening in Chinatown. You just walk down the streets and you see fancy, expensive coffee shops, expensive restaurants, like fancy-looking hotels, and it just doesn't feel like the same Chinatown that I remember going to when I was younger, growing up in Vancouver. It seems like it's changed a lot, even in the past five years. And this project just seems like a continuation of that gentrification. But despite seeing these changes, I also do feel there's a lot of resilience from the community, as demonstrated by people speaking at this public hearing and other groups fighting back against this. It seems like the community is strong on its own and vibrant on its own and doesn't need outsiders to come in and revitalise it. So ultimately, to, to summarize, as what's already been said, and I'm probably just repeating what other people have said before me, but 25 units of social housing is not enough. Low-income residents deserve to be able to stay in the community and neighborhood that they call home. So ultimately, please listen to what over 100 people have already said before me. And please reject BD's development proposal for 105 Kiefer and instead work with the two other levels of government to purchase the site and develop it for 100% social housing at welfare and pension rates. And create a public, accessible, and permanent intergenerational community space. Because ultimately, the community of Chinatown is more important than a profit-driven development corporation's desire to make even more profits. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here to speak. No questions for you, thank you. And Speaker number 162 is next, Vanessa Buie, followed by 163, Ting Chung Chen. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Buie. This is also my first time doing this, so it's a little intimidating. I was born, raised, and currently reside on the unceded territory of the Coast Salish peoples, specifically the Kwangan, Sanik, Musquiam, Squamish, and Slalitutu nations. It is important for me to make this acknowledgement as someone who identifies as first-generation Vietnamese, as a youth, as someone who identifies as queer and gender-fluid and who experiences privileges in a plethora of ways, namely being lower-middle-class, thin, and able-bodied. I make these acknowledgements as a form of transparency so you, everyone can have a better understanding where I'm coming from as I stand before you today, as well as because of how long it took me to get here and make these acknowledgements in the first place. I didn't always know I was on stolen land, just as I didn't always know I was Vietnamese or that I was queer and so on, and what these things mean in the context of being a settler on indigenous land. I'm here today to oppose the rezoning of 105 Kiefer. I'm a resident of Strathcona and live a block away from Chinatown. Often, we may consider Chinatown as a space for Chinese people, and rightfully so. Because of white supremacy, Chinese immigrants and their families were not allowed to own businesses in parts of present-day Vancouver, let alone live and have homes. Chinatown is a concrete and literal example of the consequences of racism, xenantagonism, and white supremacy in action. At the same time, as a Vietnamese person, Chinatown has also been an oasis for East Asian and South East Asian folks who share similarities across cultures. Even though I don't speak Cantonese or Mandarin, the shops, the smells, the people, the ways in which people interact are so familiar that I practically feel at home, especially considering that there isn't a similar space or history for Vietnamese people. And especially because some of the businesses in Chinatown are Vietnamese-run and owned, and that some residents of Chinatown are Vietnamese too. When we consider the rapid changes of development going on in Chinatown today, we need to fully understand how the new forms, how the, how the new forms of racism, classism, and white supremacy affect multiple communities, not just the Chinese community, which to me makes the rezoning of 105 Kiefer all the more devastating, as if it wasn't problematic enough. One of the things I do for work is organize a social justice bus tour with youth. And one of the spaces we visit is Chinatown, and what used to be Hogan's Alley. We take a busload of 50 people through this neighborhood and through the, throughout the downtown east side to discuss the history of how Chinatown came to be, the 1907 race riots, which were endorsed by the mayor at the time, and the obliteration of Vancouver's only distinct black community as a result of the Georgia viaduct. It is incredible how many participants on this tour, young and old, new residents, and people who have lived in Vancouver their entire lives, who come up to us at the end of the tour or write in their feedback forms that they were astonished how they had never learned about this history before, that this level of neglect for marginalized communities had ever existed. There are lots of reasons why I oppose the rezoning of 105 Kiefer, some of which have been repeated throughout these hearings. Easily, as a taxpayer, it's infuriating that the taxes I pay help maximize BD's profits and that the abhorrently small amount of social housing that is proposed is not clearly defined or stated to be rented out to match welfare and pension rates. 105 Kiefer will contribute to the ongoing process of gentrification that plagues Chinatown and contribute to the housing crisis we're in the midst of. At the very least, one can say that rezoning 105 Kiefer is not a solution. And if it isn't, I don't see why it's even on the table to be discussed in the first place. So of all the varying reasons, one I hope you will take to heart and carry with you tonight is this. In 50 years, when youth, adults, and seniors are on a bus tour to learn about the history of Vancouver, what will the youth tour guides be saying about Chinatown? What will they say about you, existing councillor and mayor, and the part you played in contributing to its downfall? What reflections will come from the participants who are new residents or who have lived there all their lives? What legacy is reflected when they say, wow, I didn't know that that's how communities were treated back then? I didn't even know there used to be Chinese people here, or low-income people here, or homeless people here. As someone who has worked on these tours for the past four years, who is fascinated by the history of Chinatown and is someone who is a stakeholder in the future of Chinatown, it is becoming more and more apparent to me that what is happening here now is simply a continuation to what has happened to Chinatown and the East Asian community in the past. The differences are, instead of burning buildings, they are being torn down for redevelopment. Instead of smashing windows, they are being covered up with wooden boarding, four-leaf signs, and feel-good attempts at looking to promote Chinese heritage. Instead of white people marching down the streets with torches, we have rich, upper- and middle-class white folks opening up high-end coffee shops, expensive restaurants, fancy grocery stores, and zones of exclusion. Instead of Chinese people being forced into a community, they are now being forced out, alongside poor, low-income, and disabled people regardless of ethnicity. If we thought we were past the 1907 race riots and colonization, it can easily be discerned that racism, classism, and white supremacy is alive and well in Vancouver. It's just taken on a different form in 2017. So what are you going to do about it? What side of history will you be on? What do you want youth and people in general to see about you in 50 years? How do you want to be remembered? And more importantly, how will the Chinese and low-income community be talked about? As a distant memory or as a community still in existence 50 years down the road who can remain to tell their own stories? I'd like to aim for the latter, which is why I oppose the rezoning of 105 Kiefer, and you should too.
Okay, thank you very much for being here. And we have 163, Ting Chung Chen, is our next speaker, followed by Toni Letvanchuk. Good evening.
Hi, I want to start by acknowledging that I'm an uninvited guest on the ancestral territories of the Musquiam, Squamish, Slalitutu, and Stolo peoples. As a settler and somebody who comes from an owning-class background, I think a lot about what it means to practice allyship. You've heard many different speakers from both Chinese and non-Chinese backgrounds support and oppose the rezoning. You obviously can't please everyone, nor should you try to. Whatever decision you make will function to prioritize some voices over others. In urging you to reject the application, I am first and foremost urging you to prioritize the voices of the most disenfranchised people in our city. BD's application is not just about an extra 30 feet or a single parking lot, or even the future of Chinatown. It's also about how gentrification is destroying and displacing poor, working-class, and racialized communities all over the world. You ask us, Mayor, to keep our comments to the rezoning. But the rezoning application doesn't exist in a social or historical vacuum. It emerges from an insidious neoliberal paradigm that narrows the social and political imaginary until people believe that the only options available to them are an empty lot or a condo building with a few social housing units thrown in as an afterthought. I have to reject this reframing and what it forecloses. I believe that more is possible. When I look at the people who support the rezoning, I see a profound amount of class privilege. I see peoples whose motivations are about profit, like Bob Rennie, who seems to think that TripAdvisor is an appropriate metric to gauge the social well-being of a neighborhood and that catering to tourists is more important than housing poor people. I see employees of real estate firms and people with varying degrees of power who want more options than they already take for granted. I empathize with millennials who are worried that they can't afford to buy a home in the city. But at the same time, I cannot ignore that there are over 2,000 homeless people in Vancouver alone. Those of us with college degrees and stable incomes can afford to take a step back and challenge the narratives of class mobility that we've been inculcated with, because those narratives hinge on some people being left behind. When I look at the people who oppose the rezoning, I see people who live in Chinatown out of necessity. I see people who are on the cusp of homelessness, people who are fighting for their right to survive, people who are marginalized by the language of revitalization economically, politically, socially, culturally, and linguistically. And I see allies standing beside them out of personal commitments to economic and social justice. Bob Rennie says we need more warm bodies on the streets of Chinatown. There are warm bodies on the streets of Chinatown, they're called homeless people. But for people like Rennie, they might as well be invisible because they can't afford condo mortgages or $7 pour-over coffees. I firmly believe that by approving this application, you would be perpetuating a rhetoric and ideology that directly contributes to their deaths. I am dismayed by how many people can only voice support for this project in a way that dehumanizes and invisibilizes the most vulnerable residents of Chinatown, ones who cannot afford to weather the blow this building will deliver to their communities. to whether the blow this building will deliver to their communities. When we assess community benefit, we need to be clear about which communities have the most at stake. The fact of the matter is that BD’s project was never intended to benefit the community in the first place. It’s a for-profit initiative that is offering tokenistic contributions in order to obtain public approval, and what meager benefits these tokens offer to the community are not enough to merit the rezoning. A 1,000-square-foot senior space and 25 units of social housing does not offset the damage that this development will do to the city’s most vulnerable populations. We need a senior space that does not come attached to 10 stories of market condos that will irreparably damage Chinatown’s communities, communities whose histories are defined by resiliently surviving the violences of colonialism, racism, and gentrification. Be an ally to them and reject the rezoning application.
Okay. Thank you. You have questions from Councilor Stevenson.
I hear your list, including Bob Rennie, that you take issue with on the side of the pro side, but what I didn’t hear, and I’ve heard, are quite a number of seniors who’ve come, who live in Chinatown, and have said that they want this project to go ahead, so I don’t know how that kind of, how you marry this.
How to reconcile that? Yeah. Well, what I meant by the neoliberal imaginary narrowing the horizon of possibility is that if you say to somebody that their only two options are 25 units of social housing and a 1,000-square-foot senior space, or an empty lot, then obviously the way in which you frame that question is going to affect what somebody thinks is possible. And in fact, many of those seniors have said, or the one that just spoke, said he wants more than 25 units; that’s just not been offered to him. And I also question whether or not these seniors understand the impact of gentrification on the housing prices in the surrounding areas outside of...
Why wouldn’t they? They’re pretty bright people, most of them.
Well, because nothing that they’ve said has evinced an understanding of that. It hasn’t even been acknowledged, and yet that...
Sorry?
It hasn’t been acknowledged in what these seniors have said to support the housing, that they understand the wider implications of gentrification. They haven’t acknowledged, and in fact, some of them have said things that are poor-bashing, that are stigmatizing for drug addicts and homeless people. That hasn’t been acknowledged. Lots of people have spoken to those seniors, including me, in Mandarin and Cantonese, and some of them don’t even seem to know the details of the project that they’ve come here to support. So I think there’s lots of issues, and...
But I just feel you’re sort of throwing a whole group of people under the bus that come, you know, with real deep concerns themselves, and many have a fairly good understanding...
I’m not throwing them under the bus. In fact, we share the same concerns. I think those seniors, and the seniors who oppose the project, all want social housing. It’s just that one group of seniors is so, their understanding of the situation is that this is the only option that’s being offered to them, and what I’m urging you is to expand your understanding of the political landscape and imaginary so that we can give them something better.
No, I...
I’m just gonna intervene a bit here, because we’re talking, it’s, this is a conversation about what other people might think, and I just, I guess, again, we need to stick to what we know, what your opinions are and responses. I just want to caution everyone on speaking on behalf of others.
I think that was my point, too. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor DeGenova, questions?
No, I was just gonna say the same thing, Mr. Mayor. I think people should keep their comments focused to only their comments.
Okay. And no other questions for you? That’s, thank you very much for being here to speak. Much appreciated. And next speaker, 164 Tony Letvanchuk, followed by Fred Quoc.
I’m Tony’s son. He couldn’t be here tonight, so he’ll be at the wrap-up on Monday to speak at the very end.
Okay. Thank you very much for passing that message along. Speaker 165 Fred Quoc is the chairman of the Chinese Cultural Center. Welcome, Mr. Quoc.
Hi, everyone. The honorable mayor, respected councillors, I’m here to submit my objection to this project. First, I tell you my background. For the last 30, 40 years, I’ve been in and out of Chinatown, and I’m involved in different events since ’70. And then mid-‘80, I’ve been actively involved in, participate in different events in Chinatown. And I’ve been, in the past 20 years, I’ve been directors in different organizations, namely, like the National Chinese Congress of Canada. I’ve been Chinatown Community Policing Center as a director, and I’ve been in Success Foundation as a director, and I’ve been CBA Housing Society as a director, and the Chinatown Spring Festival Parade as a co-chair. And currently, I’m a member in the Chinese Freemasons of Canada, and CBA as a director, and also Marsh Award Association as a president, and I’m also the chair of the Chinese Cultural Center. So you talk about activities in Chinatown, I know it, and I know it by heart. Chinatown has actually become more like a backyard of my home. I spend a lot of time in there, and I, I like the place, which is very vibrant in the past, since ’70. The time when there was a lot of neon sign on the street, and people in and out, day and night, were very busy times, and compared with now, it’s pretty, I mean, now it’s better. It was kind of deserted. And really, the buildings in a city is a whistle, a record of its histories, laid out in the open and for the world to see. And in Europe, European city councils understand this in context, and they do not allow modern development to protrude upon and destroy the character of the historical center. These cities benefit greatly by doing it. Millions of people from all corners of the world travel to see the beauty and the visible history of these cities. And it will be enormous mistake to destroy the whistle character of the one of the Vancouver oldest historical sites. The present and future generations of the public will bear the cost, while an individual developer risks the profit. Councilor, it is your moral duty to protect the heritage that has been left to the people of the city of Vancouver. You have the wisdom, I trust your wisdom, to protect the character, the soul, and history of Chinatown by preserving its whistle aesthetic. Rezoning to allow the building to rise above the current maximum will be like facing a skyscraper in a village. It will be an offensive anachronism, completely our place. To build in the location, in this location, 105 Kiefer, is bad enough, like a big box in the heart of the historic site. But to make a tower over the surrounding cityscape is simply unnecessary. The zoning, the current zoning bylaw already exists for a good reason, and there’s no need to make an exception to serve the interest of one private developer. The older that Chinatown gets, the more it grows in historical value. It is incredibly short-sighted to destroy the asset of Vancouver City for a short-term profit. Alongside Gastown, Chinatown, one of the two oldest sites in Vancouver, should be preserved as a site where history can be felt. Like an addition to Chinatown, a more recent construction, like the San Jacinto Garden, is a good example of how you should build to fit the character and whistle landscape of Chinatown. A towering glass box is not the way to do it, and the damage to Vancouver’s tourism industry could be irreparable. For day-in, day-out, must loads of tourists come to Chinatown, they look at, they want to look at the order, tourist, I mean, historic site, and a big, a handful of tourist guide make the living doing tourist guide in Chinatown.
So you’re over your five minutes, but you have questions? First from Councilor Carr.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, Mr. Quoc, for, for all the community service you’ve done, and for taking the time to be here tonight. I very much appreciate it. There’ve been several questions that have come up over the time of this public hearing around the groups of, the coalition of groups, I think 12 of them, that have been supportive of getting a cultural space within the proposed development. And people, including myself, have questioned why not use the cultural center. So I’m wondering, first of all, if that group, that coalition, has approached the cultural center to work out some kind of an arrangement that would financially work for them?
Okay. To begin with, I’d like to point out, one of the speaker in the past, in the last two days, Eric Seetho, and he’s a well-known notorious scammer, and he...
Yeah. Just gonna caution...
Okay. That’s a lot of, I’m sorry. Okay, so I retract that, okay? And he’s notorious...
I’m sorry, but I just feel that...
Councilor DeGenova, do you have a point of order?
I just feel that there might be a reminder needed again, even if we’re not using words such as “scammer,” just to focus on your own comments, not on other people’s comments.
That’s my personal comment. I’m sorry. Okay. I retract that. I retract that. Okay. I’m sorry. He actually, from 2020...
So we’re not gonna talk about other speakers.
Okay.
We’re just talking about the project here. Councilor Carr, did you have questions?
I just wondered whether the cultural society has been appro, sorry, whether the cultural center has had conversations or been approached around, around the use of your center.
Yes. Every day, every day, we have a multipurpose hall. Every day, there’s people, hundreds of old folks, they use the multipurpose hall to do their tai chi, to do their dance, and they do the different activities. And it’s been open to the senior for years.
Okay. And there is a use, a constant use of the multipurpose hall?
There’s constant use, constant use of that hall, pretty much every day. Except if the hall was rented out by someone to do a performance or something, then they will be requested to stop for a day. The rest of the time, every day, there is, you can go into the cultural center and the multipurpose hall, and you will see numerous of old folks doing their dance, their tai chi, and stuff like that in there.
And have there been performances of Chinese opera at the cultural center?
Yeah, on a regular basis.
There’s regular performances. Okay. And how big is your, is the facility where performances would go on, like the bigger room? How many square feet is that around?
You meant the, like, opera?
Yes.
Yeah. Usually, they cater around 500 audience.
Yes, 500 people in the audience. And do you know the square footage of your, of that space?
I’ve had, I don’t know the exact, but it is like requested by the fire regulation, no more than 540 people.
Okay. Okay. That’s great. Thank you for that information. I appreciate it.
Okay. Councilor Megs, questions?
First one, Mr. Quoc. It says here that you’re the chairman of the Chinese Cultural Center. Are you speaking for them tonight, or just as a per, end of...
The Chinese Cultural Center already declared their position, so I’m, tonight I’m speaking for myself and with my 30, 40 years’ experience in the community, not just Chinese cultural centers, the Chinese Benevolent Association, the Chinese Freemasons, the Marsh Award Association, I involve with them all.
Does the Cultural Center Association agree with your position? They’ve taken a position on the project as well?
Yes.
Okay. And it’s the same one you gave us tonight?
Yeah, they, they, it is declared, I mean, they is against it.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Councilor DeGenova?
Just a quick follow-up. Did the CBA and the Freemasons also take a vote against this? Because you just said that you’re speaking with your community experience and on behalf of those two organizations, so did they vote, and did that membership decide that?
I think with the CBA...
Was there a vote on it?
They have a vote, and then there’s some for and some against it, so I can’t really speak for CBA.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So you’re not speaking for CBA?
I’m just one of the director in there.
And you’re not speaking for the Freemasons?
No.
Okay. So you’re not saying that those two organizations oppose this project?
I wouldn’t say that.
Okay. Thank you.
And Councilor Reimer, questions?
Yeah. A quick question. It might not be a quick answer, but you do have some expertise running a large cultural space for seniors and other people. So you’ve got the center itself, which is three floors, two floors, a lot of programming space, and then you also have the museum. You don’t, do you get any subsidy from the city to do operating, or do you run it all? Do you have to raise all the money that you need through fees?
It’s pretty much, we support our operation through fees that we charge, such as Chinese school, and there’s some rental space, and then, and then on top of that, we apply for grants, like I got from Gaming Commission, and we relied on some of this funding to support our activities in the center.
And are there groups that you’ve had to say, hmm, that would like to use the space but can’t financially access it because your fees have to cover your costs?
Our fees are actually quite, in a way, nominal, because say to rent a hall for a day is around $1,000 a day, and then just to use the whole venue, which accommodate, which can cater around 550 peoples. That is for one day’s rental, close to $1,000.
Okay. That’s helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That’s all your questions. Thank you, Mr. Quoc.
Thank you.
So our next speaker is 166 Carol Lee. Carol Lee here? Okay. Thank you. Henry Fung, 167. Maybe, we may have time for one more speaker. Is Henry Fung here? Not here. Okay. Emily Lubah. Emily Lubah is here.
So I’ll begin by just acknowledging that we’re an unceded Coast Salish territory of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh people. And I’m also gonna keep this pretty short. I want to acknowledge that no speakers that I’ve heard here tonight have been implying that every Chinese person, every Chinese senior, has the same opinions on this project, obviously. But that being said, I think I’ve been lucky to have some volunteer experiences observing some Chinese seniors, and particularly Chinese senior grandmothers, which I learned called popo, in Cantonese or Mandarin, and I’ve seen some, a lot of community in spaces, and just, I think with any groups, without saying it’s nice to have space to be with people you’re comfortable with, both due to race, class, whatever, whatever, and I’m obviously, I can’t predict the future. I don’t know what 105 Kiefer will look like. And also, I should definitely recognize it’s not, it’s not my community, it’s not where I’ll be accessing, but I can still get a sense that it will change the dynamics, and although that might not make everyone unhappy, it’s making some people unhappy, and I think... and I think it will make some people unhappy. So I think maybe, at like a really basic, simple level, we should consider that.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here to speak. And our next and final speaker for the night is Tammy Starlight. Is Tammy Starlight here? Tammy Starlight, not here. That means you drew the lucky card. Richard Evans will be our final speaker for the night. Speaker number 170, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors, for this opportunity. I'm an architect and as a business and property owner in Victory Square Park in Gastown since 1996. I'm here to register my opposition to the proposed rezoning of the property at 105 Kiefer Street. My objection is based on the height and bulk of the project and the use. All are out of context with the needs of the area, which suggest a building in keeping with the scale and character of the existing historic buildings, and a use supports people, primarily low-income seniors in this case, to access affordable accommodations and services. I heard recently that good public policy is based on assessing the needs of any particular community and then addressing them. I do not believe that this policy is being applied in this case. It appears to me that in this and most other locations in Vancouver, accommodating extraordinarily high land values and ensuring high returns to speculative investors is trumping the basic needs of our neighborhoods and communities. The implications are what we are witnessing in Chinatown: displaced residents and businesses, unaffordable rents for accommodations, and smaller-scale shops and services, the privatization of public spaces, and overall devaluing of local character, and the promotion of a common, neutral aesthetic for buildings and public spaces. Vancouver, as an intriguing collection of interesting, inclusive, affordable neighborhoods, gets lost in the race for economic gain for relatively few people. I encourage the return to civic policymaking that is based on value in the broadest sense that the term means, that is, civic undertakings that promote and support health and wellness, belonging, community, affordability, and helping those who need it most. Value includes modest returns on investment, which means, in my mind, paying everyone along the supply chain properly for what they do, but does not preclude the others. I encourage Council to evaluate the rezoning application based on its merits to support the value that it will bring to the community. I am not seeing true value, and I believe that we, and I believe that in a collective sense, can do much, much better in this regard. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And we are just at our 10 o'clock closing time, so I just want to thank everyone for dedicating their Friday nights to be here. Many great speakers tonight, sharing their insights and their opinions, which we're very appreciative of. We are, we've gotten to speaker number 170. As of right now, there are 250 people registered to speak. So obviously, we will be back on Monday. We start at 9:30 a.m. on Monday morning with picking up with questions. If Council wishes to pose questions to staff, you can do that over email. Give staff some work to do over the weekends, our apologies, as we endeavor to get this work done for the community. Or you can get up early Monday morning. But we will also have questions as the hearing progresses, so we'll leave it there for tonight and recess this public hearing until Monday morning at 9:30 a.m., and hope everyone enjoys the weekend. Thanks, all.